We will now call to order the regular open session for the Lompoc City Council meeting for December 19th, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call rule?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the city council met in closed session on item number one on the closed session agenda. Councilmember Starbuck did not participate in that item and recused himself due to a real property that he owns within 500 feet. But the rest of the council met on that item and gave direction to staff. No reportable action was taken. Item number two, the entire council met and discussed that item. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please join me for the invocation by Chaplain McClellan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving and faithful eternal God, our source of hope, comfort, and joy. As we gather this evening, I invite your divine presence and guidance in tonight's deliberations and decision-making. May each one participating in tonight's meeting in person and online experience your wisdom, discernment, and presence. Thank you for each member of our city council. Thank you for the willingness to serve and the knowledge and experience that each one brings to this council as they strive to diligently serve their respective constituents and the whole of the city of Lompoc. I pray that you imbue them with the ability and desire to make decisions that are wise, just, and fair. May they seek your will, O Lord. Help them and all who speak at tonight's meeting align their thoughts, words, and actions inclined to understanding your purposes for this city. Help our mayor and our council members to lead with gentleness, embracing foremost a desire for understanding in their interactions with one another and their constituents. May they always remember to approach their responsibilities with humility, recognizing the impact and gravity of their decisions, ever mindful of the needs of those they serve and the health of our city. Tonight, Almighty God, I give thanks and express gratitude for our civic clubs and our community-based organizations, many businesses, houses of worship, nonprofit organizations, volunteer agencies, music and arts groups, and individuals for their generous donations of money, material goods, talents, and time to make this season a little brighter for others, and in particularly those whose generosity lifts up the spirits of our children. I pray for our city. I pray that we cultivate a spirit of collaboration and respect that fosters unity and progress. Give us the courage to confront injustice and to champion opportunities for equity and opportunity as we foster a community where everyone can thrive. In this season of hope and renewal, may we extend mercy and grace to those we feel may have wronged us, knowing that all of us make mistakes and that no one is perfect. May we then, by example, be instruments of your peace, and may we all find our place of contribution to growing a community consistent with your purposes and worthy of your pleasure. And now, I pray that you would give your blessing on all those present tonight. May your light surround them. May your love enfold them. May your power protect them, and your spirit watch over them now and forever. I ask these things, and we ask these things as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, and the people said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, don't get too comfortable. We are going to stop and take a moment to tour the fire department's newest fire engine. It is parked out front. We will take about 20 minutes. If you would like to go outside and check it out. Yeah? Mr. -- oh, Chief, come on forward. Absolutely. You get to introduce your newest engine. I was just getting us on the tour.
It'll just take a second.
All right.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our newest fleet. I just want to give you a little bit of context on exactly what it takes for us to purchase a fleet and to get these things in service and all the work, really the backend of things that happen. So as you're aware, equipping our firefighters with the proper and most up-to-date equipment allows for their efficient and safe operation when they're called to respond. Over the last four years, our members have worked diligently to ensure we're selecting the right equipment and apparatus that will give us, or rather will best serve our community members. Purchasing a fire engine is a complicated process that takes hundreds of hours and significant coordination. Our apparatus committee spent countless hours alongside our fleet management staff to select fire apparatus that would be efficient, modern, and would last. In September of 2021, the department took ownership of a Pierce fire engine, replacing an apparatus that was nearly 28 years old. This engine is currently housed at Station 51 and is our frontline apparatus. Immediately following the delivery of Engine 51, we began the replacement process for Engine 52 that is housed at Station 52. In July of this year, the department took possession of an identical Pierce engine to replace the failing Engine 52, which was 21 years old. Both firehouses now have frontline apparatus that is less than two and a half years old. In October of this year, the department had a unique opportunity to add an additional brush truck to the fleet. This unit was purchased through mutual aid reimbursement funds that the crews had earned over the last three years. Mutual aid assignment funding is created when the crews respond to strike teams in battle vegetation fires, sometimes for days and oftentimes for weeks. So fortunately, we were able to purchase a 2023 BME International brush truck, and adding this unit to the fleet provides for greater flexibility for the city. When our crews are called on mutual aid assignments, they respond on the brush truck. In times past, has left no brush truck available in the city in the event of a vegetation fire within our city limits. So with this addition, we can continue to participate in the mutual aid system while still having a brush truck available in the city to serve the citizens of Lompoc. So going forward, the department's established an apparatus replacement plan. This plan aids in accurately defining the timeframes for vehicle replacement, providing city leadership with the ability to appropriate funding over the life of the vehicle, and decreasing the significant impact of one-time replacement costs. So as far as our thanks go to this long list, I'd like to thank city council for approving the purchases, Mr. Dean Albro and Kristy Donnelly, I don't think she's here, but -- and then a special thanks to Travis Gomez, John Mejia, and Dirk Ishawada and Fleet, and then most importantly, to our Lompoc City firefighters for their hard work in investigating and seeking out the equipment that best suits our service model. So thank you. There's a little extended list, but just bear with me. So thank you to Chief Nunez, Chief Shea, Chief Lee, Captain Crowell, Captain Boken, Captain Stephens, Engineer Sadecki, firefighter Larson, Wendy Nesby, and all the members that assisted in preparing the units to -- in preparing the units once we've taken possession of them. So there's a lot of work that goes into this. It's not like going to the dealership and picking up a fire engine. It's years and years of preparation, and then years of lead time, quite honestly, to receive the engine. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there are questions, I'll answer those. If not, we'd love to dismiss you guys to take a look at what we have.
Any questions? I'm sure lots will come up as we
Okay.
tour the facility. So we will pause the meeting for about 20 minutes while you go out, take a tour, and either on your way out or on your way back. I see there's refreshments as part of the celebration, so you're more than welcome to grab cupcakes or fruit on your way out or on your way back in. All right, we'll see you in about 20 minutes. Let's go. Cupcakes. Cupcakes in the lobby. All right, thank you, everyone who went out and toured the new trucks, and thank you for staff showing us around them. We really appreciate you doing so. We will now move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to encourage everybody to check out the winners of the beautification and appearance commission's holiday lights decoration contest. I think we have them up there. You can go through all of them on our webpage. I also encourage everybody, if they want to check out the Christmas parade, we got that on our webpage too, and also on YouTube, if you want to check that out. I just want to remind everybody Also, the City Hall and other city facilities will be closed from the 25th until the 2nd as well. I wanted to, if it's okay, play another video for the ribbon cutting for Ryan Park. Some more wonderful things going into Lompoc.
So, thank you for joining us this morning. I am super excited because today marks a long-awaited upgrade in addition to our beloved Ryan Park. The new pickleball courts, upgraded tennis courts, our all-inclusive playground, and our exercise equipment are a great start to the redevelopment of Ryan Park.
The term goal of Lompoc to recover its parks, it's been a... The quality of our parks is a symptom of a quality city. So when our parks are thriving, it's giving hope to future generations, it's letting our kids know that we're invested in them. We want to see them have a good time and grow up and play in our beautiful parks.
Delivering on our request, not just at this park, but every park and around the city, we are looking better and better each day.
Yeah, special thanks to the parking wreck, Christie, Mario. You guys did an awesome job, it's so nice to see that. I wanted to thank fire for bringing out the engines. Thank you Brian Fallon and the fire team. It's good for our community and firefighters as well. We want them to be as safe as they can when they go out on emergencies. And last, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and safe new year. And thank you for everything everybody does.
Any questions for our city manager or comments? I just want to thank you for the tree you created for the council float. It is now out front of City Hall, so great repurposing. I think it's a new tradition that I'd love to see continue. So, thank you for working so hard to be a part of that and then continue the cheer that it brings. I looked out the other night when I was here for an evening meeting, and suddenly there was a tree. And, but I recognized it, so thank you for that, really appreciate it. All right, we will now move on to consent calendar. If there is an item that you would like to speak to on consent calendar, we will open the floor in a moment, but we have some changes that our city attorney needs to read into record.
Mayor, I had council requests that I was gonna do for the cannabis. I don't know if you want to skip over or come back to me?
Oh, you're absolutely right, go ahead and do that. I mean, you did such a great report that... Go ahead and we'll pull back from consent calendar, and we'll let you do your presentation on commercial cannabis.
Just drop the mic and walk off, huh?
I hear our engines are in play.
Yeah, rolling out. So, this is coming back for council request from July 18th, to bring back the cannabis and the zoning and where the businesses are and which ones have closed. I got you guys some bigger ones that you can look at, because this one's kind of hard to see. If you look at the legends, you can see all the different types of industries there are, cultivation, retail, manufacturing. If you look at it too, maybe you can zoom in a little bit, Stephen, and you can see if the legends or diamonds are, if they're turned into a diamond, that means that they were that type of business, but they're now closed. And if you look at it too, you can see the buffers. Six hundred feet from the daycare center, recreation center, or K through 12 schools. I don't really have a whole lot, this is for you guys to, you know, give us direction if you want to do something else with the zoning. And I'll leave it to you guys.
Given that you're in an active legend map, is that available to us to be able to zoom in and see?
Yes.
Okay. Because some of these, you can see that it overlaps where some are open and some have closed, and it's hard to discern. Say up on Central and over on Laurel, I think? If I'm guessing, the streets. And so, if we have the ability to look at this electronically and zoom in now?
We could also click different business types and zoning types if you want to.
Yeah, okay.
It's active.
That's really helpful.
Our GIS did a real good job on this.
So, off the top of your head, do you know how many have closed and what types they are?
Is it on that legend too? I think...
We've had ten.
Ten closed, yeah.
Okay, ten closed.
How'd you get to the right page?
Mostly dispensaries or dispensary and a testing lab?
Two labs.
Two labs, okay.
And I believe the rest are dispensaries.
Okay.
Retail.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that retail may have closed and may have been, I think it happened a couple times, may have been bought.
Okay.
And then reopened.
Okay.
Our Minnesota code requires that the license is issued to a single person, it is not transferable.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Dean or the city clerk? All right, thank you.
I'll leave the maps with you, and you have more direction later, let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll turn to our city attorney for the corrections to consent calendar, and we'll move on to that.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two changes to the consent calendar items tonight. One is number five, and you have a revised contract purchase order contract for that on the dais. Each of you has received that, and there's also copies on the table outside the door for the public. Some of the work in this contract purchase of the public restroom for College Park has been removed from the contract, and so the purchase amount now, instead of 338,193, is reduced to 316,412. That's the amount of the purchase and also the amount of the appropriations.
The not to exceed part?
Staff recommendation.
Okay.
On item number six, the title of the item includes the word installation. That should be deleted, it is just the purchase of the play and park structure, it is not the installation of the play and park structure. So those are two changes to the staff recommendations.
All right, thank you for that. All right, and now we'll open the floor for public comment on consent calendar. If you would like to speak to this, anything, one through nine, you are welcome to come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone would like to comment or calls in, I'll go ahead and read the process. "All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting." Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on consent calendar. I'll bring it back to council. Are there any items to pull, or do I have a motion? Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar.
With the adjusted changes?
With the adjusted changes for number five and six.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And councilmember Ball seconds. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And consent passes 5-0. All right. Now we'll open the floor for oral communications for non-agendized city matters. If there is an item that is not on the agenda that is within our purvey, you're welcome to come and speak to that for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Good evening, council, mayor. So, I'm always up here speaking about public safety issues. Tonight, I've been made aware of one that could be a very serious, very serious issue. And that is the condition of intersections of H Street crossing from College, well, basically all along H Street. And it is a severe danger to people with disabilities with the way that the pavement is, with the way that the street is raised. Wheelchairs will have trouble getting through this, and they can get stuck in the intersections. People with mobility limitations can trip over these, over these things in the streets. And that could be a lawsuit for either the city or Caltrans, whoever's responsible for these areas. And that could be, you know, nobody wants to see a lawsuit happen for the city, nobody wants to see anybody injured. And I believe that even if this is Caltrans, you know, area, that the city can make suggestions to Caltrans about what needs to be improved, what needs to be worked on, to avoid any kind of litigation, to avoid any danger to the public. Those who are disabled, those who are in wheelchairs, those who have mobility limitations are definitely at risk, from the pictures that I've seen. And I will be emailing pictures that were sent to me by a good friend of mine who's in a wheelchair, he's in a motorized wheelchair, and he goes up and downtown, all over. I'm sure everybody in town has seen this guy around. He is a good friend of mine, and I would hate to see anything happen to him, or anybody else for that matter, because this is a serious issue, and it needs to be dealt with, whatever it's dealt with by the city or by Caltrans with a city suggestion. Thank you.
Hello, I'm here tonight to speak to the city council and to the residents of Lompoc. This is concerning California existential crisis. This is from Chris W. Street, the CEO of New California State, dated 12/10/2023. "The nonpartisan California Legislative Analysis Office just announced, acknowledged the state of California business model has collapsed. After projecting 14 billion in deficits for the next two years in May, the LAO now projects the state of California faces 100 billion deficit over the next 18 months, and 187 billion over the next four and a half years. The financial press is calling the grim alert a shocking surprise, but the new California State movement that seeks to split the state is half in half, has been issuing similar estimates for several years. The warning signs of existential crisis has been brewing include California unable to issue a timely audited financial statement since 2018. Over 1 million residents leaving the state and collecting lower taxes after raising tax rates. California since 2021 has burned down 97 billion of reserves to about 26 billion at the end of November, and is running 4 billion of negative cash flow per month. The liberal California Legislature also recently passed a law that limits its local school districts to holding a maximum of just 3% budget reserve, about 10 days of funding. The rule corporate for the accelerating crisis is the end of the globalist room that began in California 45 years ago with Proposition 13 tax revolt. The cattle-polted former Governor Ronald Reagan to the White House, President Reagan slashed the 87% capital gains tax right to 27%, kicking off the greatest venture capital boom in history. California's Center for Information Technology and Communications consistently received 40% of global venture capital investments, hoping to make spectacular capital gains by taking venture companies public. Investors poured about 160 billion into 7,400 mostly startup California companies in 2021. California's venture boom is credited with driving state personal income to grow by 13.5% since 1978, but the biggest sector to benefit from the VC boom is the state of California budget that grew 18.5x, 18 billion to 235 billion. But the legislative analysis now reports that the pace of California companies going public has shriveled by over 80% from 2021. With corporate and personal capital gains taxes and related spending averaging about one-third of California revenues..." It should be no surprise California revenues are down by 25%. Thank you.
Do we have a caller? Okay. While we get the call transferred and take it, we're getting some more chairs and opening the back doors. Now, do they stick now? Oh, great. Okay, thanks for that. Lost them? Okay, well hopefully they will call back.
In regarding to, in regards to the California existential crisis, but the legislative analysis now reports that the piece of Calif, the pace of California companies going public has shriveled by over 80% from 2021. With corporate and personal capital gains taxes and related spending averaging about one-third of California revenues, it should be no surprise California revenues are down by 25%. New California State predicts that the current California venture capital bust is already morphing into a serious recession that will further hammer state revenues. The LAO forecast assumes revenues begin to grow in 2024, but they warn a recession would eviscerate California revenue by another 30 billion per year. And for further information on New California State, you can go to ncs51.com or newcaliforniastate.com. Thank you.
So there are some empty seats up front. If you'd like to sit, there are some signs blocking them, but if you'd like to sit, you can come forward and move those signs if you'd like to sit. We've added some additional chairs. If we need more, they'll need to be put up front because of keeping aisles clear for emergency exit if we need that. Okay, seeing no one else rise and no one calling back in, the caller that we lost is welcome to call back at the end of the meeting when we have another oral comment. All right, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Item 10, appointments. Before we start the 2024 calendar year, we will need to appoint a mayor pro temp for the 2024 calendar year. In reviewing the history of who has served recently, Ms. Cordova, councilmember Cordova is up in the rotation to serve as the 2024 mayor pro temp. I would go ahead and make the motion if she's willing to accept that, and look for a second.
I'll accept.
Awesome.
Second.
Yeah, well, given you're currently serving, I would, I wouldn't torch you with a second here. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, now we will move on to a public hearing. Item 11 is adoption of resolution number 6627, parentheses 23, implementing year one of the last best and final offer to employees represented by the International Association of Firefighters Local 1906 and approving supplemental appropriations. We will begin with our human resource director, Gabe Garcia.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, our audience and our audience watching at home. Yes, this item is bringing information back to the council regarding negotiations that city staff entered into with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1906. We have Che Johnson here that was part of... We have Che Johnson here that was part of our negotiating team to give council update and information and then answer any questions, and then we'll open it up to, to the IFF's representatives to come and address council if they wish. Che?
Thank you, Gabe, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you today is a resolution to help bring a close to the last round of negotiations with the Fire Association. Under state law, under the Myers-Millias Brown Act, a public employer has the ability, after they've exhausted good faith negotiations, to unilaterally impose elements of its last, best, and final offer. This does not create an agreement between the parties, and the parties remain at an impasse in negotiations, but it ends that negotiation cycle and allows negotiations to start anew before the beginning of the next fiscal year. The resolution before you gives council, the City Council, a choice. The council could do nothing or agree with the recommendation of staff and provide the members of the IAFF Fire Association with a five percent wage increase. Again, it's not required by law, but the city is, city staff is recommending unilaterally imposing the five percent raise for two reasons. Number one, we believe that it is internally consistent with what we've done with the Police Officers Association, who reached an agreement over two years at five percent per year. And the city staff believes that the Fire Association should be treated the same as the Police Department members and be granted that five percent raise, even though we could not come to an agreement. Number two, we also believe it's fiscally sustainable. One of the main reasons why the parties were not able to reach an agreement in these negotiations is because the Fire Association was looking for a seven percent raise rather than a five percent raise. We understand the concerns from the Fire Association. We value the hard work and dedication of the members of the Fire Association. And we understand their concerns about recruitment and retention. But point, but, but to be quite blunt, we believe that seven percent is not sustainable for the long term, and that was the cause for the impasse in, in reaching an agreement. Ultimately, after exhausting impasse procedures, the city went to a third-party neutral fact-finding individual who provided a recommendation consistent with the city's last best final offer of a five percent increase for the first year. Again, council has the option to do nothing and just allow this issue to sit until next year when we restart negotiations. However, council does not recommend that. We recommend that we go forward with the unilateral implementation and provide that five percent raise to the fire, fire members. The second part of the resolution would also be to give direction to the City Council to get ready for the next round of negotiations before the beginning of the fiscal year. The city anticipates that will happen shortly, in two thousand twenty-four. Most likely, you know, in the next two to three months, we'll get started for the next round of negotiations and try again in good faith to reach an agreement with IAFF. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the President for the Fire Association to provide his position on the current impasse between the parties.
Any questions for our consultant or staff before we? Seeing none, we'll yield the floor to the union rep.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, and members of the council. I'm Louis Farah, President of the Lompoc Firefighters Association. Two thousand fourteen is when the association started looking seriously at retention problems. We conducted an in-house study that presented to the city a warning that if they didn't do something, we were bound to escalate into the problem we're facing today. One hundred and forty percent is the turnover rate of the Lompoc Fire Department over the last twelve years. Eight years is the median experience level of our fire department. When you factor in the new hires that are coming in and the retirements that will happen in the next year or two, that number becomes a staggering four years, four years of experience on a fire engine. Three million dollars value lost sunk cost that the association estimates using standard business analytics that the city has wasted in highly trained firefighters walking out the door to other departments. Forty shifts a month is what the department is having to fill every single month due to vacancies. One million dollars is the current overtime trajectory of the twenty-two, twenty-three years, because due in large part to the vacancies. Twenty percent is the total sum of raises that the association has received over the last decade, and in three of those years, we received zero percent. In fact, prior to two thousand thirteen, our firefighters received a pay cut. Eight dollars a month is how much more a San Luis Obispo firefighter makes than me, a tenured, almost eleven-year fire captain with the Lompoc Fire Department. At Santa Barbara City, good news, I make forty dollars more a month than a firefighter at Santa Barbara City. Let that sink in for a second. As a frontline supervisor on an engine company, I would make more if I went and started over at any of the area fire departments, back in the fire academy. What incentive is there to, to stay at our department at that rate? Two percent is how far apart the city and the association are from making a deal. That number translates to a little over seventy-five thousand dollars a year. I don't know what we just heard, but the arbitrator basically said to give us the two percent cash value of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Disappointingly, the contract negotiation process started with the city violating our MOU when they decided to compare us to nine California cities that weren't in our MOU's comparable city list. Naturally, this watered down the salary disparity percentages. Funny enough, though, even in that list, we ranked nine out of ten. The only department we beat was the city of Yucaya. If you don't know where that is, it's a tiny little town in Northern California. It's a combination volunteer-paid fire department. That's the only department we beat. City staff will stand up here and tell us how they can't afford the cost. The truth is, as we heard, and the city manager's been quite open with it, that they just don't want to give us more than the cops, even if it means tanking the fire department. It's really weird to me because a police officer lateral in the current job posting tops out at seven thousand nine hundred dollars. A top step firefighter here earns six, six thousand six hundred dollars. That's a thirteen hundred dollar difference. So not only do we get paid less, but then apparently we're also handcuffed to whatever raise LPOA gets. It's like the city manager is intentionally trying to keep us down for some odd reason. The association had an independent financial study done to see how affordable that two percent difference is in the grand scheme of things, and here were the major findings. That the city is significantly under projecting revenue. The city has a history and a pattern of significantly under projecting revenue. The city has a history and a pattern of over projecting expenditures. The two thousand twenty sales tax measure and the cannabis tax measure have been performing extremely well. The cash and investments account is being super funded. The unassigned fund has shown significant growth. There's plenty of recurring funds available to meet the seven percent. We started the meeting with a rather convenient show and tell featuring our new fire engines. I mean, we all know why it was scheduled for tonight. This is what we refer to as a diversion. It's the tactic that the city and the city manager use almost at all public events these days to deflect your attention away from the real issues, tearing your fire department apart from the inside out. The issue that he refuses to face. Great, we got some new fire engines. They replaced a twenty-five-year-old and a twenty-one-year-old fire engine that became our backup fire engines. And had we been a year late on that, we would have had no fire engines because those backups have spent the better half of two thousand twenty-three in maintenance this whole time. It doesn't matter how many shiny new fire engines we get if we don't have the personnel to safely staff and operate them. It's the definition of how manipulation works, right? It's treat you like garbage, buy you some shiny things, tell you I love you, and just hope you forget about all the bad stuff. Back in two thousand fourteen, the department was hemorrhaging newer employees at the firefighter rank. Then the problem grew, and we started losing more longtime members like engineers and chiefs. The city manager and Human Resource Director's solution now is to place pressure on the department to hire more locals because I guess locals don't want to be paid comparatively to their counterparts, as if they forget that some of our biggest losses have been the locals. They make excuses for our problems while ignoring the obvious answer. We're twenty-six percent behind the average of our comparable departments. We lost some of our biggest locals in the recent years. Firefighters that were born and raised here, that attended school here, they were generational families from Lompoc. They started at the bottom with our department as unpaid reserves, and they worked their way up, some of them to the top ranks, battalion chiefs, even an acting fire chief. These people were the heart and soul of our department. They were progressive drivers, transformers, and now they get to blow the world away in the South County because they realized after years here that nothing would ever change. The city showed them no love. They didn't care. The city didn't fight to keep these dedicated firefighters. It's time for the city to face the fact that the fire department is their biggest problem right now. Our department, like most fire departments, has a constant staffing. That means that each day, we need nine firefighters of various ranks to staff our apparatus and provide coverage. This is really important because outside of Vanderburg, there's only three fire engines in the whole Lompoc Valley, and we're two of them. If there's a vacancy, it gets offered up as voluntary overtime. If nobody voluntarily takes it, somebody is forced to work. We call it force hire. They say, Louis, we don't care if it's your birthday, if it's your wedding, if it's your anniversary, if it's Christmas, you're working tomorrow, and then I gotta find somebody to bail me out. After a while, all these vacancies and overtime, nobody picks up the overtime, and it becomes force and force and force and force. Pretty soon, morale has plummeted because you've done nothing but keep forcing people to work. We have firefighters having to work three, four, five shifts straight, and for those that don't know, we work twenty-four-hour shifts. That means that people are having to work seventy-two, ninety-six, one hundred and twenty hours straight. That's seventy-two, ninety-six, one hundred and twenty hours away from home, away from families, sleepless nights running calls. Right now, seventeen of my twenty members have worked more than four months of extra shifts this year to help keep this place afloat, and ten of them have worked over five months of extra shifts. That's engineers driving apparatus when they're tired and groggy. It's firefighters providing medical care at two AM at hour one hundred and fourteen of their shift. It's captains having to make command decisions during life-or-death emergencies while walking around like a zombie. People tonight will go look us up on Transparent California and say, I don't know what these guys are talking about. There's people making a hundred and eighty grand a year. Yeah, because of the vacancies. A large chunk of that overtime was forced upon our firefighters. They didn't even want it. If you worked a year and a half of hours within a single year, your Transparent California would look pretty impressive as well. You don't think we're the biggest problem in the city because we force hire shifts needed to keep the rigs in service? Fire engines stay running because we have the policies and the rules to literally force people to stay at work and not go home. If we didn't have that, you'd have no fire department, plain and simple. A third of my firefighters here today have been force hired. That makes us much different than every other department at the city. You and the public are shielded from the problems. We put on a smile, we do the best we can, and we make it work. Because what else are you gonna do when your battalion chief comes to you at six thirty in the morning and says, hey, Louis, you're not going home, I need another twenty-four hours out of you? Tonight, though, I'm here to tell you that we've reached our tipping point. We can't keep it up anymore. We're tired, we're exhausted, we're burnt out, and we're not seeing the help we need from the dais. We're not seeing our leaders lead. We're definitely not seeing it from council members who ran on our backs as champions for public safety. None of this should be new to any of you. I've sent out a few emails over the last few months highlighting all of this. I've asked you to connect with me so we can discuss it in detail, yet only two council members ever hit me back. Councilmember Ball, Mayor Osborne, I appreciate you in our discussions and trying to solve this problem. Councilmember Vega, Councilmember Cordova, Councilmember Starbuck, I've never heard from you. Radio silence. I'm here to tell you, though, that burying your head in the sand isn't going to fix the problem, and doing that for years is what got us here. You were elected to make tough decisions. It's easy to approve new fire engines when the feds give us millions of dollars of COVID money, like manna from heaven. It's a lot harder to say, give the firefighters a little more, because they're being hammered by the constant years of vacancies. It's time for the City Council to take immediate and urgent action by providing competitive compensation to its firefighters. And it starts tonight with denying staff's request to impose the one-year five percent deal and demanding they go find the extra two percent. You're the policymakers, not the city manager. You were elected by the people to protect the people, not the city's executive bureaucrats. The association wants to make a deal. We want to get this over with. Our last proposal is what we believe will help actually fix the problem. How much money have you wasted in attorney's fees and staff time already? How many millions have you wasted in retention issues? It's time for our City Council to step up, prioritize the safety of its firefighters, its residents, its visitors, and provide the compensation necessary to maintain a well-trained and experienced firefighting force that can continue to provide high-quality emergency services to our community. We're not asking for much. We all know two percent isn't a huge deal for the city, seventy-five thousand dollars a year. But it's a massive move towards solving our retention, recruitment, and morale crisis. It also shows your firefighters that you validate their situation, you acknowledge the problem, and you're here to help fix it. Thank you.
I, I realize it's the first time for many of you at a council meeting, and I know that some of you are frustrated by this concept, but clapping is not the best way to show your support. And I know that shaking your hands in the air is a silent but visual way, and I would appreciate that simply because those that disagree might be disin, incentivized to speak. So out of respect for those that may not agree, please refrain from clapping. All right, do we have any questions at this time before we go to public comment? Councilmember Ball?
Just one question. Is it accurate that we've had a hundred and forty percent turnover in the last twelve years?
I don't know if those numbers are accurate. Those were the numbers provided by the Fire Association. We did look at recruitment and retention issues, and the recruitment numbers in the fire department are better than they are in other city departments, such as the Police Department. In fact, the average retention in fire is longer than it is in many other departments.
Talk about some of those departments where we're retaining, because I, I mean compared to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to, to Gabe on that.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Ball, so we do have retention issues in electric. We have retention issues in streets, urban forestry, police, as, as Mr. Johnson had mentioned. And right now, currently, we have to, we don't get applicants for those, and so we're looking at addressing those as well. But just to put it in context, in the last twelve months, we had four firefighters that left the city for a number of reasons. Some of them because they did want to go to another agency. One of them, actually, two were for medical reasons, and one was for other reasons that, that we can't mention really. We did have a number of applicants. We just hired four new applicants, as, as Mr. Farah had stated. So the, the fire department will be fully staffed, and he is correct, there's eight years of, of average service that I'd like to say that are amazing firefighters. So he makes it sound like they're not, but they really are. I mean, they, there is, they're very, very skilled. They do urban search and rescue. And we looked, I can tell you from the financials, and Mr. Albo can speak to that, Christie Donnelly's not here, but I personally went to them, the finance department, and said, can we do this? Can we afford this? Can we, can we move forward with this and not put the city in jeopardy? We have a huge, huge hurdle, and that's the CalPERS increases that are coming. And that's going to be really, really important for us to be able to, to sustain. So the questions that we asked was, one, can we afford it? Two, can we sustain it? What we offered the association, we can afford and we can sustain. Anything aside from that or outside of that, we can't. Not, not sitting here telling you that, yes, we can afford that and move forward with it. So there's a very delicate balance.
I appreciate that, and I, tremendous amount of respect for everyone who's working hard to get us either to retain or to bring in some new people. I do remember, you brought up the electric department, I do remember us as a council having some very stressful times when we had to make some choices and to make gestures towards that specifically. towards that specific department to make sure that we got a few of them to actually stay with us. So, I'm glad you brought that up. So, again, as a reminder, it is up to council to figure out how to thread a needle on this and how to retain and how to keep some people. For me, if we're anywhere close to 140% turnover rate and we're paying overtime for some of our firefighters to work an extra four or five months a year, I don't know, that sounds expensive too. So, I'm curious how we might thread that.
If I may, the purpose for today, the meeting is actually, this is a little bit unusual. Typically, unilaterally imposition occurs when employer is looking to impose concessions or takeaways on employee groups after they've reached an impasse. That is the legal way under the MMBA an employer can make changes to terms and conditions of employment. The purpose of today is not to renegotiate and relitigate the series of meetings city has had with the employee organization. It's a very simple question for the city council. The option is either to unilaterally impose a 5% raise, not a concession, but a raise, or to do nothing. In either situation, the city will be back in negotiations with fire. And so, the option of giving a 7% raise, as the association president asked for, that's not really an alternative before council tonight. That would have to be new direction from council to go back to negotiations, restart the negotiations with that direction. So, it's not the option of the association's last offer and the city's last offer. It's really a question of, does the council want to impose a raise on these individuals or it can do, maintain the status quo and do nothing?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, you also suggested that, again, it is council. It is up to council to stop and pause and give new direction if we choose. Is that accurate?
That would be through closed session, through negotiations, and that would be to give direction to staff to restart negotiations. The second part of the agenda item before council today is to do exactly that, to start the process of restarting negotiations. So, if that's a discussion council could have, staff would recommend that that discussion be under closed session labor negotiations about what that new direction might look like.
Perfect. I thank you for all of that. I just look forward to hearing from the public.
If there are no further questions, we will go to public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, you have three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Please come forward to the podium.
How are you doing? My name's Charlie Martinez, Vice President of the California Professional Firefighters and also a public Lompoc citizen. And I just want to kind of talk, I've listened to this back and forth, and, you know, just a few things, and I only have a couple of minutes, you know, negotiations is not when you give one first, last, and final offer, that's not negotiations. That isn't. That's not good faith bargaining when all you say, here's what we're gonna give you, that's it. That's not it. That's not good faith negotiations. You know, physically sustainable, you know, when you talk about $3 million in losses, having to start over again with firefighters, those numbers are real. We were here, I was here a few years ago, we were talking about complaints about how many, how much overtime you guys played the firefighters. I remember that. I was up here speaking for the firefighters. Now, you guys are, the answer is to work these guys to death with hours and hours of overtime, and that's gonna be the answer to the problems, to, you know, your staffing situation. You are severely paying your firefighters well below the average locally. You are losing your local firefighters, people who are born and raised here, to other departments because they'll just drive another half hour, hour to get a higher-paid job. That's real. Those are numbers. Fact check me. It's insane when I hear somebody say, you know, Santa Maria had a fire just yesterday. Five engines, one truck company, 20 people on a house fire. And understand where you live in right now, we have two fire stations, you guys already need a third fire station, you guys already need a third fire engine, you guys already need at least 20 more firefighters at the station to be able to handle the workload that these gentlemen, these professionals are already doing, at the expense of their families, at the expense of their kids, at the expense of their free time. They make a lot of money. Guess what? Guess who pays besides the taxpayers? Their families get to pay for that. Everybody loves being married, everybody loves their families, we love our jobs, these professionals love their jobs, and yet, you're gonna be losing them. You're losing that faith, you're losing that loyalty, you're losing that dedication to the city because, again, they are also human beings. Fatigue is real. You overwork anybody, you're gonna get substandard, you're gonna get a mistake at the cost of a life. God forbid. Not because they're not professional, not because they don't know how to do the job, and for somebody to insinuate that the president of a local 1906 is saying, downplaying the firefighters, that's insane. What he's saying is experience, not that they're bad firefighters, it's a skill that's acquired over many years doing this job. I've done it 31 years. And your skill level is gonna be reduced, not because of the quality of firefighters, but because of that experience level that is critical on any job. And you want to compare apples to apples, we're not talking about forestry and all this, we're talking about firefighters. You want to compare apples to apples, you compare Lompoc Fire with Santa Barbara City, with Santa Maria, with Santa Barbara County. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
I am Vince Culver, everybody knows me probably here. I work at Vandenberg Fire Department. I'm the local F-116 president. Served with these guys on many occasions. Who am I? The guy that comes down mutual aid. My agent comes down here quite often. I've been in Lompoc, I don't know how many times, for fires. Fire investigation, vegetation fires, structure fires, you name it, I've been down here. Why? Because you guys don't have enough. You don't have enough. Vandenberg's here to help you, so is Santa Barbara County, okay? The reason why, no different than any, a lot of departments, including mine, you're losing people. We see it every day. I know them. I grew up here. Yeah, I live in the village, lived in Lompoc for a little bit, but at that time I lived in Lompoc, I was on the hotshot crew. People were leaving then. You have a problem, you have to hit it head-on, like we do, when we show up to your house, when it's on fire, when the water's leaking. Why are you calling us? Because we're an all-hazard department, all of us in the county. We come for everything, and when you get somebody that shows up, and like they said, they are a zombie. They are. I don't know how many people here work 144 hours a week. I know Vandenberg does. We do 72-hour work weeks, 72. We're the highest hourly rate fire department, meaning we work 72 hours while these guys are working 56, and they're now working here at Lompoc more than we do, more than us. Even for our guys to come down to Lompoc to want to work because they want to jump ship, they're not going to because they know these guys have no rest. Health and wellness in the fire service is real. Stress is real. I don't know how many people sit here at their workstation, feel stressed out, like, you know, I'm calling sick. That's cool, you can leave your desk, you could do that. I don't know if, how many people are missing from your seats right now, but I guarantee you, the engines that showed up out there came with four, two in, two out. We keep four on the engine. They don't have that opportunity to go home and take a chill pill, and if they do, there's something really wrong with them. I run the Lompoc Field of Boot. I never push Lompoc City to come out there and fill boots. You know why? Because they're working overtime, probably 90% of the time. I get it. To make $34,000, that's great, we use college cadets to do it, and my department. Why? Because you guys are overworking your fire department. Listen to another fire department tell you you're working, overworking your fire department. What's that gonna do? Smart decisions? No. Somebody goes in a house fire without a mask on that we breathe through is gonna get carbon oxide poisoning, their hemoglobin gets jacked up, they make bad decisions. Do you want your fire department to make bad decisions? Put more people in the seats, put more money in their pocket, 2% increase, 2%. Brand-new fire trucks, cool, comes with four seats, don't forget.
Nick Lenko, resident of Lompoc. Few months back, there was an alarm ringing at the apartment right next door to mine, right next door. At midnight, my dogs are barking like crazy. So, I'm like, huh, what's going on? So, I look out, my peephole, what do I see? I see uniformed fire officers, firefighters, and they're right outside my door. So, I open my door, like, hey, what's going on? Carbon oxide right next door to my apartment, in a vacant apartment that had been worked on earlier that afternoon. That apartment was full of carbon monoxide. What are we gonna do when we don't have the firefighters to respond to an apartment full of carbon monoxide within our community? The lack of firefighters in our community is a threat to public safety, it is a threat to our safety as a community. Rex on Highway 1. Who responds? Lompoc City. Their scanners have been going off all night, sirens going off all night. They're overworked, they're underpaid, 2% is what they're asking for. The council, whoever who's involved in these labor discussions, has agreed to 5%. Let's go to another 2% to 7%. Let's get some new firefighters. We have some nice shiny fire trucks. Let's fill those fire trucks with firefighters so that we don't have a disaster in our community. Let's fill these firehouses so that the firefighters are not overworked. We are paying more in overtime than we would be for new recruits. We need to keep firefighters, not have them go to other departments. We need to attract people to our community. We need local people. We need to keep people local in our community. What are we doing? We are letting people go to other places that are an hour's drive, a half hour's drive. They still live here in Lompoc, but they're working outside. That shouldn't be the case. That should not be the case. Thank you.
You're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your comment. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Shannon Sudecki. I am a wife of an 11-year fire engineer at the Lompoc City Fire. I'm also a mother of a nine-year-old cognitively impaired special needs child. I implore you all to listen to the deep need coming from a family, and I speak for all families of Lompoc Fire Department, that the need is very, very real. We know that you can find a way to budget and sustain an additional 2%. Our husbands, our lives have been flipped upside down. I implore you to look into a child of cognitively impaired special needs child in the eyes on Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Christmas Eve, and tell them again, I'm sorry, we thought Dad was coming home, but he's not. He's force hired once again. And then when they do come home, they're shells. I mean, how are they able to even be working members of a household? It's just not feasible. And you guys are able to, you know, look there and say, oh, we're not able to find this in our budget. It's about safety, it's about health, it's about well-being. We implore you to please try and find it in your budget. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one else calling in, we will close public comment on this item. Please, if you want to speak, please come forward as quickly as possible so that it's not a delay and we aren't aware. I'll open it for you. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just, I had no idea this was going on, and at this point, I'm very concerned about my safety and the safety of my neighbors and my family. When leaders of our department are telling us that they are operating in zombie mode, we need to act and we need to act now, and I hope that you will. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to speak before I close public comment? All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Any questions, discussion, comments? Councilmember Ball.
Are we, is it possible to ask questions of anyone who spoke up here?
We historically don't engage with the public comments, just with staff or...
What's the fire department?
Oh, yeah, you can ask.
So, I think just for, just for, because I know we've lost a lot of firefighters, I know we've lost a lot of experience, but is there a rough number in terms of the amount of years of experience that Lompoc Fire Department has lost? The reason I'm saying that is it's one thing to just say people come and go or they get paid more or less, but if we're, if we're just getting excited to like, hey, we just need firefighters, if you've got four years' experience, that's enough, we need you, but we've lost 150 years of experience of people with local knowledge who understand how the city works, understand how the water works, understand how the electric works, they just know things. It makes me concerned about how many years of experience have we lost as a city over the last 10, 12 years? If you would be willing to, I mean, can you take a stab at that?
I don't have an exact number, but I can tell you that we lost two battalion chiefs over the last, I guess we'll say, three years or so that had been here for 20 years, maybe longer than that. There is an institutional knowledge that you lose, that you only gain from getting experience in the city. I can tell you that if you go to the museum, that there's a basement downstairs and these windows aren't really real, and you can't get out if you have a problem, and there's no fire sprinklers, and the closest hydrants over here, and all that knowledge then leaves, and now you got to, you have a constant stress of training and training and new people and training, and then it becomes, well, when are they gonna leave? And then it's, yep, we're hiring four in January, but now other people feel compelled, well, I can leave because it's not such a guilt burden anymore, right? Because a lot of us pick up overtime just to take the burden of the force hire off a buddy. So, there's this institutional knowledge that you just can't, you can't quantify, you can't place a dollar amount on it, but it's huge in the fire service. Knowing the districts and the apartments and what's sprinkled and what's not, and where the fire hydrants are, and the medical policies, and knowing that, hey, major staff has to always get a helicopter here, and we've got huge ETAs to trauma centers and heart centers and stroke centers, fortunately, it's one of the ones that's in town, but there's just all sorts of things you can't replace, and it takes you so long to get there on the knowledge side, and then you leave. And it just, and then it's disheartening. It's just such a morale killer, right? You know? So, to answer your question, Councilmember, I could quantify it in a spreadsheet, I could come up with that number, looking at hire dates and departure dates. It's massive. I mean, I'll tell you, over the last 12 years, we've lost, it's like 30 people, and then 40-plus retirements. And every time a department has a test, there's five or six other people here that are taking it. We're only, we only have 20 firefighters right now. If five of them get hired somewhere else next year, like, I mean, at a certain point, you just have to decide if you can fund it or not, because you can't just keep working people to the bone, you know?
Appreciate that. Thank you. So, at least from my perspective, and I'm not sure what the action steps are here, I just, I feel strongly, and I, look, I appreciate our city staff's always working super hard trying to figure out how to make sure that we have money down the road. I think that's an important question, but I don't know. For me, and again, this goes for police and fire, it's a hazard industry, I think somebody mentioned that today. I personally would prefer that we had our police officers paid enough so that they wanted to stick around. That's something that we've been focused on for a couple of years now, to try to retain. We need that experience, we need people from here, and I feel like we need that same emphasis in our fire department. Now, I know the numbers are different, and if we pay them, then everyone's gonna want the same thing, but I think this is a critical issue in our community, and it deserves unique focus to make sure that we can stabilize and that we can recover, that we can keep safety as a priority in our city. That's what everyone pays your taxes for. That's why, that's why we have a city government, is to keep you safe. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, I do appreciate all the public safety.
You know, I do appreciate all the public safety, both police and fire. And I do agree that probably the pay scale for the amount of hours worked, hey, it's earned, okay? But at this time right now, I think it's good news to hear we have four more recruits coming in. And I think, according to the city attorney, I think the city attorney will agree, we're here not to renegotiate, but we can negotiate immediately after the council votes to give the five percent raise, correct? I'm asking Jeff.
I believe that's correct, but I'd refer it to the city's labor.
Yeah, maybe we can come over here and just make sure that we know we're on the same page, we're on the same wavelength.
Correct.
Is that correct? Immediately, they're instructed, it's right here in the staff report.
Correct.
Immediately, you'll begin negotiations for the next following year, correct?
Staff is not sticking their head in the sand, as was alluded to earlier. Staff is asking to give a five percent raise right now and start the process to begin negotiations in early 2024. So we will be going right back into negotiations. If the, if council, and this is council's prerogative, if council chose to vote that down, that means we're doing the exact same thing we're asking to do, to go back into negotiations, but not give a five percent raise, which I don't think will help with recruitment, staffing, or showing the employees that we appreciate them. So in either outcome, the city will be restarting negotiations.
Got you, got you. And you know, just to make, and thank you. And just to answer the union president's saying he's never heard from us and we say him by name. In the previous years, I've sat down, had a cup of coffee with a previous fire president, and I've actually sat down with a couple of you guys. And, you know, we're all on the same page and everything. It would be wonderful if we had another cup of coffee and try and at least talk. Emails don't work for me like that, okay? It's very impersonal. And for you to name names when I haven't heard you pick up the phone and call me either. So let's put it, it's eye for an eye here. And I'm on the same page as you guys, but it's your call too. Just like I tell everybody else, I'm here. If you don't talk to me, it's on you. I'm here all the time. Goes on you guys. So if you guys are going to throw mud, make sure you can throw it back the right way. So I'd like to make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation of the five percent raise. And I'd like to also go with the second one, number two, direct staff to immediately start a new round of negotiations just as the staff report goes. But I want you guys to know, I do appreciate, I know that lives are on the line. I know when you call, when we call, you're there. But this isn't the place for renegotiation right now. We've gone through a lot of meetings here just to get to this point. And I think that's where we're going here. So that's my recommendation.
Councilmember Ball.
I appreciate all those things. I am personally, unhappy is the wrong word, but I think it's so important that this issue is no longer in closed session so that our community can understand the weight of this issue. So for me, I still don't clearly understand. I want us to get into a conversation as quickly as possible about trying to get this, to get this fixed in a long-term way. I know that's going to take a lot of negotiation, a lot of threading a needle. So again, maybe someone can clarify. What are we being asked to do tonight? In layman's terms, what are you looking for and what's our next steps?
Either way, we will be restarting negotiations. The option before council is to either give a five percent raise right now or give a zero percent raise right now. Those are the two options.
So again, just to clarify, that we don't have the ability to say, well, we'd like a third option. We don't have that ability. Legally, we do not have the right to say, well, we don't like either of those two options, we'd like to talk about a third one.
The third option would be to do nothing. So say we're going to give zero now and give direction to your negotiation team to go back to the negotiating table. But that's the second item in the agenda? So if that second item was not in the agenda, that would be something that you could, you could order. But that's something we're asking you to order anyway, is to give us direction to restart negotiations.
Hypothetically speaking, if we restarted negotiations at some time next year and there was some, some way hypothetically it got to seven percent hypothetically, when would that start for the firefighters?
That would be a negotiable subject. So the effective date would all depend on the direction of council and what agreement we could reach with the association.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
I am very grateful for the service of our fire department as I am for all of our first responding agencies and even our electrical employees and everybody else that supports maintaining this city on a daily basis. I am saddened by the level of, I guess, the level of communication and how this has gone. I have always personally taken time out for the fire department. So to be called out the way that I have, it does hurt my feelings, but I understand where you're coming from. Please understand that there are also a lot of considerations that were given to, to this negotiation when it was brought before us. And the weight of this decision is not just on one department. It is on every single department that runs through this city hall. So it is on police. It is on every other department that also received pay increases. I said it in the last meeting, I think. You know, I get what you're saying when you say back in 2014 or 2013, that was a different council, that was a different time. Unfortunately, I can't fix that, nor can I take responsibility for those decisions made. And some of those people will probably run again and maybe some of you will vote them back in. But the reality is this, you were offered a five percent increase, the same as everybody else in this city or the same as everybody else that was negotiated. And your service is never looked at as less than. You can look at my service as less than, that's okay. Come 2024, we will be able to vote again. But here's, here's what I want you to know. Us moving this forward tonight, if the council votes in its entirety to maintain that good faith and say, here is your five percent increase, regardless of the fact that we weren't able to come to an agreement on the seven percent, we get to renegotiate and we get to come back to the table. I hope you will come back to the table with us. I really do.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Before we go to a vote, I want to thank all of you for the work you're doing and the above and beyond. Your message has been heard. We are committed to get you what we can, provide you, and then some. And we want to go back into those negotiations and get you closer. So I will accept the second by councilmember Starbuck as well as the commitment to immediately move back into negotiations. But we wanted to make sure you got the five percent so that we weren't delaying some appreciation as we move forward, trying to get you closer to what you're asking for. But we are all committed to getting there. All right. If there's no further questions or clarity, let's vote. And that passes four one. All right. We'll now move on to item number 12. Approval of a Ninth Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with Pale Blue Dot to Extend the Exclusive Negotiating Period for Proposed Development of a Space Center Project on Approximately 82 Acres Including and Adjacent to the Can Adam Park. Mr. Malave, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make this staff report very brief because we had a special meeting on December 6th where I reviewed the status of this project. This is an agenda item tonight to extend the Memorandum of Understanding with Pale Blue Dot Ventures for a three-month period to April 2nd, 2024. That will allow the city and Pale Blue Dot to continue their negotiations on the DDA, the disposition development agreement that will govern the project's entitlements and eventual potential sale to the developer for the proposed Space Center Project on approximately 82 acres in the northern part of town nearby and adjacent to Can Adam Park, or including an adjacent to Can Adam Park. Under the MOU that was entered into in 2019, there were several steps that Pale Blue Dot, the developer, was required to undertake. First was a seed funding round, raising a threshold of cash and in-kind contributions for the project. They have completed that. They have also submitted a design plan, experienced design plan describing the design proposal for their project in concept. There was a feasibility analysis portion of the Memorandum of Understanding where Pale Blue Dot submitted a feasibility, a financial feasibility analysis for their project. The city hired a consultant, too, in fact, to review that analysis and also an updated feasibility analysis from Pale Blue Dot. We had the presentation, latest city consultant feasibility presentation on that on December 6th at a special meeting. The city and Pale Blue Dot are, through the city attorney's office, are continuing to work on negotiating the disposition development agreement simultaneously with all of those things having occurred over the past several months and a year about now, I would say. So the decision tonight is whether, after considering all of that information that's been provided by Pale Blue Dot, including the feasibility studies and the city's review of the feasibility studies, would the council like to extend the MOU for an additional period of time? I am proposing a three-month period to April 2nd, which I believe will be enough time to complete the negotiations and have a council hearing on approval or denial of the disposition development agreement. And, but that is not, that is only staff's recommendation. Council can approve any extension or you would like, or take no action. And if you take no action, then the MOU would expire in, on December 31st of this month. I think that about concludes the staff report. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, the applicant is here tonight and there can be public comment.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Jeff, I have a quick question. A few months back, the council agreed that we would put this on a ballot for public input on the turnover of a public park. It didn't get voted in to do that in March, which would have been a great time to have an MOU end in April. But we've agreed as a council that we went ahead and we're going to go ahead and put it on the November ballot. Why don't we extend this MOU out a year till next December after the November election that we agreed to do?
I would not have any problem with that if that made sense to the council. I don't, I don't see any problem with it.
It just makes sense. We all agreed to put it on a November ballot. Why would we keep stringing it along for three-month increments? Put it on there in additional eight months, boom. We know if the city wants to do it, they vote it, or they don't. And at that point, the decision for the council should be considerably easier.
I do not have an issue if the council wanted to do that. The applicant may, the applicant may wish to speak to it. I'm not sure, but I don't have an issue with that.
Councilmember Vega and then Ball.
Jeff, that's exactly my question, you know, about the timeframe. And also, within that timeframe, there obviously was a benchmark to go to April 2nd that you were expecting to have a resolution to. So what was that benchmark by April 2nd that they were going to be asked to conform to? What was Pale Blue Dot going to submit by April 2nd so that we could, or so that we could make another decision?
What we need to do, what, the next step in the process at this point is to finish our negotiations on the disposition development agreement. It's basically like a purchase and sale agreement, essentially. And bring that to city council to have you either vote it up or down. After that, Pale Blue Dot would go into its planning entitlements and the public hearings and all that. April 2nd was just chosen as a reasonable date that we both thought we could get this done and get it to council. Not for certain, of course, not for sure. It depends on how the negotiations go, how difficult they are. But both sides thought we could get it done by then. And it also gives us a deadline, by the way, where we have a time period to try to meet. There was nothing significant to the April 2nd date other than that.
So if we went with the recommendation that was made by councilman Starbuck, would there be a benchmark that you would expect to have in place, which wouldn't kill anything, but still, it would be something that would be expected by staff from Pale Blue Dot? Or is that something without having to revote or whatever too? So that we can have everything finished and lined up?
There wouldn't be an official, any more official benchmark, but I can guarantee you that the developer, and he can speak to this, wants to get this done as soon as possible. Because the more time that it takes, the more expense it is for him because he is paying the city's costs. And so whether we have an end-of-the-year deadline or an April 2nd deadline, we are going to move as quickly as possible to get the disposition development to council.
Got you. It does make sense for us not to go through this each time, every three months. It makes sense, what he said, councilman Starbuck, to go to the end of the year. Because if we already voted in to put it on the ballot, it's kind of redundant. Just like right now, we're just trying to beat a deadline of December 31st, whether it's yea or nay. So, does that make sense though? You're saying there's nothing negative to extending that to that date?
I have no, I do not see any problem with extending it to the end of the year, the end of next year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
I really don't have a problem either way. I do kind of like the idea of there being some sort of pressure on it. That said, I'd hate for us to get to April 1st and then we're sitting up here with, okay, let's agree on a 12th or 15th extension. So again, if there's a lot of work that could happen in here, I'd be open to six months or, yeah, maybe pass the election would make sense to me as well.
All right. Councilmember Cordova.
City attorney, I just have a couple of questions. What happens if during the time of the extension, if it goes all the way to November, the two parties cannot come to an agreement? Because there's a lot of terms to hash out in this disposition agreement.
Yes.
I get, I get the point of it, but I, I think everybody, again, is putting away the actual information that needs to be addressed during this. So what happens if there is no agreement between Pale Blue Dot and the city?
That's a good question. If we come, if we extend it all the way to the end of next year, but then say in March, the two sides come to loggerheads and we just cannot agree on a certain term of the agreement, it will just sit. There will be no action taken until the MOU expires in December 2024, unless there's some breakthrough in the negotiations or one side gives in or doesn't give in. Or one side gives in or the other side gives in, it'll just sit.
And the second question is, is there a requirement for the disposition agreement to be finalized and hammered out before the land goes on the ballot to be gifted away or to be given away or to be surrendered?
No, the election could take place first. If we had it on, you know, if it had gone on the March 2024 ballot, probably the election would have occurred before we got that disposition agreement approved.
So what happens if it goes on the ballot? There is no disposition agreement as of yet. It goes on the ballot, the people voted in, but then you come back and there's still no agreement. What happens at that point in time?
The election would be contingent. So the item on the ballot for the people to vote on would be contingent on the developer getting all his planning entitlements, the DDA approved, getting the financing. The discontinuance of the park use would not occur until the development is approved by Planning Commission and City Council and all the financing commitments are obtained by the developer. If that never happens, then the discontinuance of the park does not happen. The ballot measure is contingent on all that happening.
So my only concern, and when I hear council members say, you know, why do we want to touch this again in three months? Well, it's my job to touch it or to discuss it or to deliberate on it, to make a decision on something. If they bring it every week, that's my job to do it. So for me to scurry out of having to do something four months from now, if you're saying that the developer, in his best interest, he's wanting to get this hammered out, then there's a reason why you would put, I don't care if we don't decide to do it today. I just want the facts to be out there. The other thing that I also want to say is that it is fair. There's a certain amount of residents here, but it is fair to also have the disposition agreement fully worked out so that when people, when all residents go to vote, they actually know and they have all the facts in front of them and they're able to go back and see that, hey, this is how much we're selling the land for. Or we're giving it away, or we're going to lease it out, or we're going to do this, or we're going to, that's fair to them. to them too. You guys are just a select few. So just know that if this, if this goes to the ballot prior to the disposition agreement actually taking place, you're not going to have all those facts yet. The same way the rest of the community won't have all those facts yet. But hey, I just want to bring up certain points.
Councilmember Vega and then I will poll council about the applicant's request, so.
Okay. Hey Jeff, can you kind of just reiterate what the ballot measure was for or what it's going to be for? Because I think it's getting mixed up here that it's for the full project, but actually it's for Ken Adam Park and the use or the discontinuance of the use of a partial portion of the Ken Adam Park, okay? We don't want to get it mixed up here.
That's good. That's a good idea to clarify that. The development is proposed on land that is currently Ken Adam Park. It's a city park. And in order to discontinue the use of a city park and turn it into some other use, there has to be an election and the people have to vote to discontinue the use of the park. So that's as a park. So that's all the election would do is it would say, yes, this public park can be used for something else. It doesn't approve the whole project.
Right. And I just wanted to clarify, okay, because Ken Adam Park is a use, but what we, what we all voted to do was let the public decide whether they want that use to be changed over to allow this project to move forward with the envelope that was presented to us. So that's all this is about. It's not approving the whole project or whatever, okay? So I just wanted to make sure that mixing apples and oranges, it doesn't work. So it's real simple. You either want the park to go that way or not for the ballot measure. We already voted to approve that, to go to the ballot measure, to let the public decide whether they wanted to have that or not. And that's your decision. So that's not ours.
Let me poll council. The applicant requested 15 minutes. Do we want to provide 15 minutes or a shorter time? I'm happy to give him time, I just want to hear it from council.
Yes.
Fifteen minutes? Do I have a majority?
Yes.
All right, so that's a majority. All right. Where are you, Mr. Frank? Thank you. You've moved a few times. The floor is yours.
Mayor and councilmember, thanks so much for the extra time. I won't take the 15 minutes. There's a lot of people here and it's running late, so I just want to cover a couple of things. Let me, let me just give a little bit of history here and thank you for all the people that have stayed also. Do you have a? Okay. So we, I just want to kind of, I know there's been, everyone's saying, what, nine extensions? Geez, isn't that kind of a lot? We started kind of mid-2019. We went into a design shredder, Story Jam. We started raising money. And then we took our last check on February 29th and literally the next day, I think the 1st of October, everything started shutting down for COVID. And I think we all thought that was going to be, you know, two weeks, two weeks to stop the spread and it ended up being two years. And like every six months, we were asking for extensions. So we had lost two years and four extensions to just COVID-19. And then things kind of finally cleared up at the start of 2022 or so. And basically, we had a couple key hurdles to jump over, raise 750, which we did, and then give the city the concept and feasibility study and the experience design plan. Those are really thick documents, you know, like 300 pages that our creative guys did. And then Kaiser Marston reviewed that stuff and some of it they liked and some of it they didn't like. So we kind of went back to the drawing board and kind of redid some of our material and then submitted some new information in the summer. So my point here is that if you look at that graph, the blue stuff is what we were doing, the brown stuff is what the city or their consultants were doing, and the red is what the COVID impact. So we lost a couple of years. We've paid $240,000 so far to the city, including about $50,000 tonight to get us over the top. The lease negotiations have been ongoing. We kind of went down one path, it got really complicated, and then we had it back up. It was so complicated, I was pretty sure I couldn't explain it to a potential investor. So we kind of recut that and restarted. We're actually pretty far along and I think we can get that, I think, wrapped up in the next month or so. I think the city attorney is quite right. We want to get this done as quickly as we can because we're paying his time and everyone else's time and it's, there's other things going on. We have other opportunities now emerging around, literally around the world, between Greece, Texas, and Scotland and UK. So we want to get going on this. This is our lead project to do, but there's other opportunities. So anyway, where we are right now, you know, in California, it takes, this is hard. It takes five to 10 years to do this kind of stuff. And unfortunately, and you know, Burton Ranch, you know, they were in here about a month ago, I think. They started in 2006 and they got an extension to 2035, all right? So, you know, we've been kind of at this for about four years, of which we lost two years. So the next big milestones is get this lease signed and we need to start working on SEQA also. We, you know, need to go to an election in November. We'd hoped to do it in March, but we'll do it in November. And we have to be convincing to the people in this room and a lot of other places that what we're going to bring is going to be, you know, valuable to the city and to the city council. And we think it has huge impact on the city and our intention is to kind of run basically a campaign to convince you, convince the voters that that's the right thing to do. Thank you. So, so I'll just cover this and then I'll stop. So we started 2019. It's been two years. We've, we've actually invested so far 1.1 million. We paid 240 of that to the city. There's been two major studies. We've actually taken lessons learned from those, so we've kind of tweaked things and we will continue to do that. We kind of, we're one year into this lease negotiation, but we think we can get that done in kind of the next couple of months or so. So let's get this signed and then we'll start to look at SEQA, but we know we need to go to an election and we need to convince the voters that this is the right thing to do. One of the reasons we want to go faster is because we think that once we have the DDA signed, that makes the conversation about investment, you know, much, actually much easier. And I've had a number of conversations with people say, wow, super idea, space is really hot, you guys are in an interesting place, STEM education, global national need, you got the land yet? And I said, no, I'm still doing a Kabuki dance with the city. And we're getting, we're getting there, you know? We would have walked away a long time ago if we didn't think this was worth doing. We think this is worth doing. You know, I kind of split my time between London and here. I live literally right up the street now, so, you know, we're not going away. We want to get this done. We'll take, you know, whatever you want to give us as far as the extension. I think it's coming to you every three months. And one of the things I wanted to show you was that in those two years of COVID, you know, we were extending every six months because we thought that's, you know, it was going to end, but of course it never did. So if you want to give us till the end of the year, that's great, but our intention is to actually go much quicker than that. And we are hoping we're here in kind of February saying, okay, we've got a DDA signed and we need to have your approval.
So for clarity, you would prefer to have the extension through April as a motivator for everyone because that's your goal is to have it done before that?
Well.
Because deadlines are helpful, let's face it.
Deadlines are helpful, but if you want to go to the end of the year, I'm, we're still going to press to try to get something in, in the next couple of months.
Okay. Councilmember Ball.
So I actually appreciate Councilwoman Cordova's comments. I think there is some value to, and again, we're hearing from both parties, they want to do this as quickly as possible, but us getting as much information out into the public before the election, I think, is beneficial. So I mean, I could stick with the same date or pick something and, you know, give them six months or something. But I think that's important that the public is fully aware of all the details of this before they get a chance to vote. Just my thought.
Councilmember Cordova.
City Attorney, upon successful completion of the MOU, what comes next?
Upon successful completion of the MOU, that would mean that the DDA is approved. What comes next after that is the developer will submit, he'll prepare and submit his applications to the planning department for the project. And then those will go through Planning Commission public hearings and city council public hearings. And after those are approved, that's one of the steps in our conceptual DDA we have right now to getting to the point where they are able to purchase the property from the city.
So again, I just, I just want to point out that it is in the best interest of the developer to have this MOU completed. And if what Mr. Frank is saying is that his intention is to have it completed because he needs that DDA, why do we want to push him all the way to November when he's hopefully able to get it done in the first half of the year and the negotiations could be completed? And then he could have a DDA if that's what the negotiations draw out? And then when it goes to the ballot, then everybody has the information in front of them? I don't know. I mean, I just, I don't know why we can't do it and then come back if we needed to in April and if the man needs another extension, we've given him nine, which by the way, thank you so much for clarifying that those extensions were requests from, from the developer. How many times, City Attorney, has the city of Lompoc or this council been the one to request the extension because of something he's waiting on us for?
I think one of the extensions, I actually had a staff recommendation to extend because I had been delayed on something.
So just know that the extensions have been requested because of the reasons that Mr. Frank stated. So when I see and I read hatred about how the city council has dragged their feet and they've done this, it blows my mind that this is playing out in front of you guys and you can't see it.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, I need your help, okay? There's good points here. The developer wants a timeframe. They want to make sure that we have an agreement, we have, we have a deal, so to speak. And then after that is, you know, it's on them to complete everything. What would be the best method for us to put a benchmark there to help them? And then if they meet these benchmarks, it automatically goes to the election, okay? Because basically, we already kind of said yes because we voted to put it on the ballot. So if they meet this and you say yes, why don't, can we do something like that? And then automatically, it doesn't take another vote. You just tell us, hey, we have everything we have and we have a timeframe.
I think I have an idea. I have a quick question for our city clerk. The resolutions to put a measure on the November ballot would be adopted in somewhere around August? Is that correct? I think it's around August. So if you wanted to give the developer a little bit extra time and you wanted to have the DDA voted up or down before the November ballot and even before you have to make the final decision whether to put the park decision on the November ballot, which would be in August, you could extend it to July. That would give us some more time, wouldn't have to come back in April if we don't have it done by April. And you would know before August when you have to make the final vote to put it on the November ballot. You'd know whether the DDA is approved or not.
And I think that they can have it done, you know, it's just like anything else. If they want to turn it in by April, it gives us even more security, more time.
Yeah.
We know where we're going, okay? It doesn't have to wait till July. Now, if they're, if they're having time getting it by July, then there may be an issue there. But you know what? I'm listening to Mr. Frank and it sounds like they want to be aggressive about it. And I think that'd be the way to go, Jeff, you know? That would be kind of my motion, my proposal if we're going to go that way. Let's, let's go ahead and put a benchmark, go to July as per, anyway.
Well, that's just my idea if you wanted to give more time.
I'd like the attorney to guide us through this so that we can do it right and then everybody feels secure that we've done our part before we obligate ourselves to the election.
Well, hold that motion till after public comment.
Okay, well, I got you, man. Just lock that in, okay? Don't forget.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, before we go to public comment, but I think one of the items that we could really do that would simplify this is to go ahead and put the extension out until November and do like we've done numerous times in the past. We, we're going to, our park improvements, we get an update. Staff comes in, they tell us, this is what we're doing. Every couple of months, we're brought up to date on these things. It's very simple to ask for an update in April, August, October on the status of this project. And if anything else comes up, obviously, staff is going to inform council. It would become an agenda item. I don't think we need to make a mountain out of a little molehill with this. It's, all we're doing is to get the MOU process over, get it past the election and receive the updates. Simple.
Councilmember Vega and then we're going to public comment.
Okay. Let me say this again. I don't think what he said was much different than what I said except for it would, once you have everything, it's an automatic go, okay? Once we get the warm and fuzzy from you. I mean, is there, is there a different way that I need to, to word it, Jeff?
I, I think it's just the difference is, Councilmember Starbuck is proposing November or December with periodic updates.
But that works, but without the benchmark to allow the developer to have all this information in so we can make a more informed decision, it seemed like that would be smarter.
I think you understand the two options, so it's up to council.
I agree with you, Dirk, but I think we're going the same way. But I think it's, it's for the public. It'd be better to know we have, they have all their ducks lined up and it helps them to know where they're going. And then it helps us because then we don't have to go to an election if they don't have all their ducks lined up. So we're not spending money or somebody's not spending money.
Well, the applicant is spending the money, so.
Somebody's spending money, but I guess you know where I'm going with this, okay?
I've heard both proposals. I've made notes and we can bring it back for discussion on a formal motion after we hear from the public. If you would like to speak on this issue, you're welcome to come to the podium if you want, there is three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. You don't have to use your entire three minutes if you don't want to.
Before I begin my brief statement, I want to thank the members of city council for being willing to listen to my comments tonight. I'm Frederick K. Biddle, 36-year resident of Lompoc and proud father, grandfather and business owner and rotarian of 20 years. Pretty proud of that too. You guys have been handling the nuts and bolts of the timelines and all that. This is the emotional, the part that the residents of Lompoc get to go ahead and try to impress upon you why we feel this is so important and what you're doing is worth it for you. And so that's what I'm going to focus on tonight. I'm just one of, one concerned member of Lompoc, but I think I speak for hundreds and hundreds of fellow citizens when I say that Space Base is probably one of the most important issues that you guys have had to deal with in a very, very long time. I mean, as far as its significance, its potential significance for Lompoc. Not since the conception decades ago of the potential satellite of Allen Hancock College up on, ironically, on the same little mesa overlooking the valley and the nearby military base. Not since then has a city been presented with such a tremendous opportunity to go ahead and have, to incorporate into our identity something of this magnitude, an entity that will instill pride into our civic mindset, bring jobs and needed revenue or just call them basic financial benefits to our economy, establish for our city some kind of reputation. 13 days ago, I used the thing armpit. I don't really want to go back there, but I want something better than that. And I think this gives us something that would enable us to keep our heads high. Something like this is, is just a tremendous opportunity. But most of all, it gives our children and our grandchildren a facility that fosters development and upward mobilization of our, of their minds. Right now, you know, I'll be honest, as opposed to those same children having nothing better to look forward to in Lompoc than to be able to say, oh, we got a great selection of well-decorated but quietly less challenging. of well-decorated, but quietly less challenging relaxation facilities up and down our streets. I don't think that's demanding very much of our kids, and I think that's pushing them in the wrong direction, but it's everywhere. And now we're sitting here scratching at each other over something that could be nothing but a positive. And I didn't hear too many negative things, like it absolutely cannot work, and the people that want to focus on, well, it didn't say it would work, or whatever, I think that's just a reason to try to pull negativity out of a hat when it doesn't need to be there. And I challenge city council to try to be optimistic in demanding more from Lompoc than what you're currently allowing to happen. So, anyway, I didn't finish, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Mike Cowens, and I'm here representing the Lompoke Valley Association of Realtors. All of us are self-employed entrepreneurs here in town. We're out here every day trying to sell Lompoke to our clients and our friends. While this project will not give us additional homes to sell, it's going to be a huge plus to market for the city. Today, we're only asking for an approval to move this on to the next step. The property has been available for a couple of decades without anybody showing interest. It can only be used for a couple of different things. I remember here about possible use of, an extension of UCSB, that's not very likely. That would mean floating a bond, and the City of Lompoke's not ready to vote for any bonds. At this point, the cost for the city on this project are very minimal. The developer's been covering all that. While a couple of you appear not to be in favor of this project for reasons we don't see, we are only asking you approve this step so that the project can proceed along to the next step. There's plenty of safeguards in this process to keep whatever fears you may be imagining will happen. Again, we just want you to extend it, keep it moving along. Thank you.
Council, I am a 20-year citizen of Lompoke, and I am very proud of this town and where it's going. And with the mindset of this coming to this town, it's making me feel a bit prouder that we're moving in a good direction. I'm here to say that I am in support of this project, and please approve, and I urge you to approve, the amendment to extend the MOU negotiations, and let's keep moving the ball. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, first, I actually just want to say that I, and I think most of the supporters, actually really appreciate your diligence and the job that you do every month on all of the issues. I was here on December 6th, and I did make a couple of notes after I left, I just wanted to point out. Councilwoman Cordova, you actually spoke to the crowd on December 6th, and you alluded that the supporters were here just trying to protect and capitalize on their $10,000 investment in Pale Blue Dot. There were a lot of people in the audience who had absolutely no idea what you were talking about, there was conversation, what did she mean? I want to be clear that I am not a Pale Blue Dot investor, like so many of the crowd, so many of the supporters. I am, however, an investor in the city of Lompoke. I graduated from Lompoke High School. My husband and I chose to raise our family here. We own property in the city. We both own and operate small businesses right here in the city of Lompoke. My daughter left the state for college, she is back, she is married, she is raising her grandson, my grandson, in, in the city. As a real estate broker for over 30 years right here in Lompoke, I speak with people daily about investing their money and investing their lives into the city of Lompoke and into our community. SpaceX has proven, year over year, that there is a need and a market for growth in the space industry at Vandenberg. The government has chosen Vandenberg as a space for space. Lompoke has the ability to leverage this identity and make a name for itself that goes above and beyond the negative interpretation that the rest of the county like to throw around. There were also some public comments that suggested the city of Lompoke should put its money into school district or other ventures that would help its citizen, and I want to point out again that this Space Base project is a private venture, and it was, is not using city funds. In fact, Pale Blue Dot has also, you know, been paying for the city costs up to this point. If our community has a name built on innovation and growth, that may, in fact, open opportunities for our school district, like attracts like. Our district and our teachers could leverage this name for grants or STEM programs for our schools that would want to take advantage of being in the same valley as Vandenberg Space Force Base, or Elon Musk SpaceX, or the Space Base camp and the program that it offers. So in the last couple of years, with all the delays and the shutdowns required because of COVID and the backlog that caused, whoever asked for the extensions, instead of looking at the time that it's taken to get here, we should actually feel grateful that Pale Blue Dot has been able to keep the interest and expand on the project to keep it moving forward, even in light of all the slowdowns. So I again implore you to embrace this project, give Pale Blue Dot the extension that it's needed, as our city leaders, please believe that we are deserving of this new identity, and take action for the future and successful growth of our community.
I just want to say real quick, everybody is expecting you guys to do something, extend it, whatever. I think it needs to go back to old-school politics. Roughly 10% of the population votes, 40,000 people in Lompoke, go set up a tent somewhere on the street, we don't need to wait for an election. Go ask the people. Quit waiting for us to come to you, it's your job to listen to us. That's why you're elected. It's not how you feel or what you want, it's what the people want. You're elected as our voice and nothing more.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here in support, obviously, of this project. My name's Kim Rose, I was born and raised here, I'm a 1982 graduate of Cabrillo, and a 1989 graduate of Cal Poly, I'm a veteran teacher, 26 years here, I've taught math at Cabrillo, and currently teach there as well, I'm their math department chairperson, and teach at Allen Hancock Statistics. Our education, I would love no more than for this to take root. If we root it, it's going to grow. Like the gal before me stated, teachers are going to grab these grants, we're going to get grants, we're going to get funding, to make displays and projects, maybe the schools can come in and have their own displays here. One of my children is now a mechanical engineer, I always took my kids to the Houston Space Center every summer. It started as a little building when she was little. Well, look at it now, and look at her now. This stuff grows, it grabs kids. If you just explore the Space Center Houston, we can become that here. Ideas that pop into mind, our local schools, like I said, could have displays, anti-gravity, put a plant in space, put a fish in space, ferment wine in space, what does a worm do in space? We could do all kinds of different things. Teachers will do that, because that's what we do, given the opportunity to do things like this. One thing that comes to mind is I would love to teach the college-level mathematics. The kids don't have to understand advanced calculus to know how we track our ICBMs, how we track our missiles, how our radars work, range, azimuth, elevation, they don't have to know all that. We can just use the data possibly and teach them how that all works. What's a polar orbit? What's this 3D thing that we talk about? How does our telemetry sites work? This is where we live, and our kids don't know all of this. I think that they should. A space center is going to provide the opportunity for that. Allen Hancock, too, is pursuing the opportunity, as you probably well know, to offer bachelor's degrees. Surely, that's going to attract STEM students, who knows, maybe they'll become a university. We will have the Space Center here, and those professors as well, I guarantee you, are going to pursue grants that will support different kinds of projects at the Space Center. It'll be right next door, like literally feet, they can walk over to it, you know? Someday, I just want to be able to look at a Space Center here in Lompoke, like I do with the one in Houston, like I do with my daughter, with my daughter who's a mechanical engineer, like I do with the aquarium at Cabrillo that started out as a fish tank, you know, and the winery that was a great plant, great plant. I want to look at our Space Center and say, wow, look at that, we did it. Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. My name is Michelle Parkinson, I'm a resident of Lompoke, a registered voter, taxpayer, homeowner, very interested in the Space Base project. I'm here to raise my voice in support of the Space Base project and the granting of what it seems like you're going to do is go ahead and give them the extension. I think it's a great opportunity for Lompoke to have a world-class, space-themed educational and recreational destination right here in town. People come here all the time to see the rocket launches, they come for the wine, they come for other reasons, I think this would give them another reason to stay. Most importantly, I'd like to see this council try to find reasons to say yes to this program, and maybe not try to focus so, so hard on why to say no. One of the things that came up in the meeting tonight that's not in my notes was about Ken Adam Park. It's not like we're giving them Ken Adam Park, Ken Adam Park has only half of the property, and if anybody's been to Ken Adam Park lately, it needs help. Their projections of what they plan to do up there will make it an astronauts' memorial that you can be proud of. If you've walked up there and looked at the trees and the memorial the way it is today, it's shameful. Thank you very much.
Do we have a caller? All right, as soon as this gentleman is spoken, we'll go to the caller.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came out here to support the new Space Museum. I'm a 60-year resident, and I've lived in Lompoke for an extremely long time, I went to high school here, elementary, I graduated here from the University of Laverne. There's nothing more exciting than space. Jeremy, you said it all when you talked about your family coming here, how your dad was an inspiration to you. Well, this community is an inspiration to me. We have an opportunity to put Lompoke on the map. We finally, finally do. We're a special place on Earth. You don't realize that Lompoke is in a Mediterranean climate? There are only five places in the world like this in Lompoke. Lompoke is one of the only places where they can launch rockets into the Southern Hemisphere. Lompoke, Vandenberg Space Force Base protects the United States of America. We're very, very lucky now to have Blue Dot come and pick us, they picked us. They can go all over the world. Can you imagine that? They can go anywhere and build this. And guess what? You build it, and they will come. They will solve all your problems as far as tax dollars. We'll have a police force, we'll have a fire department, we'll pay them what they want. It'll make us a happy place. It'll make us special, just like Lompoke is. Thank you guys for coming.
You can put the caller through if they're still on the line?
I attended the last meeting, and I just wanted to be able to clarify a couple things from that last meeting. One of the things that was expressed was that the Lompoke District having the money to send the students to camp, and I wanted to clarify that the district does, it currently sends students to camp, as do the majority of districts in California. It's actually part of the education code in California for fifth or sixth grade students to attend outdoor education. I also wanted to provide some information that currently the state of California is providing some additional funding for districts called the Extended Learning Opportunities Program, and these monies are specifically for programs such as this, for field trips, for after-school, for camps, and things like this. So the state is putting money aside for programs such as this. So I wanted to provide that background, just for my continued support of this project. As was mentioned below, before, by other speakers, the, the educational opportunities for this are, would be huge for Lompoke. Also want to focus that it's not just the camps and the field trips, tremendous opportunities for high school students with career technical education, and hospitality, business and marketing, work experience, arts and media entertainment, as well as manufacturing and product design. So I just wanted to put forth my continued support for this, and ask for the council to support the continuance of this memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers? If you do, please come forward.
Hi, everyone, my name's Mary Lee Velasco, I was here on December 6th, and I came away with a couple of feelings as I left, and the first one was, I bow to you guys on the city council. I have to say, the time you give to spend here, to spend your evenings, to read, to look, do your, doing your due diligence, it's appreciated, it's not lost on us, even if we don't always come across as warm and fuzzy. And the other thing was, I came away feeling, no offense, Councilmember Cordova, that you came across as, that you knew better than us, and that, I think, in your position, I don't feel as a constituent that we put council members in their position to know better than us. I think you're there to represent us, and that's all that we're asking is, you know, I guess, I feel in a little bit way you were transparent, and I wonder if maybe you can't be the most objective because of the job you do, and because of the hotel industry, and what they're doing with their hotel. And I wonder if, I feel like if you showed your true integrity, you would kind of bow out if you can't be objective. And so that's just my perspective, and it's one of, I'm sure, many, but I just wanted to bring that to light, and to also say, you know, as a resident here, I've been born and raised, I've seen so much opportunity kind of slide by our way, and I wonder, why? Why? Okay, I've grown up, no offense, Joyce Howerton, under the cloud of your no-growth mentality, and I ask myself, what has it done for our city? What's it done for us? Because right now, I'm struggling to see it. I'm looking at vacant buildings everywhere, no reason for people to open them, no, no true drive to be here, we're lucky the vineyards crept over the hills, or we'd be really screwed. Because at this point, that's the only thing making us on the map, other than these rocket launches, thanks to SpaceX and Vandenberg, Space Force Base. Listen, let's get with the program, let's embrace it, let's educate our community, let's bring people here, let's put Lompoke on the map, and let's thrive, let's move forward and make our community great, let's pay our firefighters, let's pay our public servants, come on! But this no-growth mentality is killing us, it's killing the city, and we're drying like a dried-out grape.
Please put the caller through.
I'm thrilled at the idea of a Space Base. It's something that we've looked forward to for a long time, and I think possibly Pale Blue Dot may be the one to bring it to fruition. I specifically would like to support the city attorney's suggestion to extend the MOU to July, in order to be able to get on the August ballot with all the information that's needed. So I, I hope you all will support the whole thing, and as a 45-year resident... And as a 45-year resident, I am really excited to be looking forward to something like this.
Thank you for that. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? If you'd like to speak, please come forward. The, line up.
Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Osborne. My name is Ken Switzer. I'm a local real estate agent and I've been helping Pail do Blue Dot Ventures and real estate-related matters for several years. I'm a 36-year resident of Santa Barbara County. I've worked in real estate in there for almost 30 years. I work with both commercial and land development property, as well as residential, and involved in several hundred transactions with investors and developers over the years. I have many connections to Lompoc professionally and personally and currently serve on the Board of Directors for a well-known Lompoc nonprofit organization. I'm speaking today about something that struck me at the end of the last meeting, when the subject came up of the risks to the city of Lompoc if the property were completed, parks operating, Space Base is operating, and then were revert back to the city because operations of the property seized. From the perspective of a real estate agent, I want to talk about how we approach risk and also a bit more specifically about the financial risks to the city of Lompoc should the property eventually revert. Because unless I missed, I think there was an important admission discussion last week. In the case of what is the risk to see if Lompoc, if CalSpace venue stops operating down the road, there are several events which would all have to happen in combination for the city to be in financial jeopardy. I'm not going to assign the odds myself. That's for the principles of the project and the city to assess together. But I can lay out examples of events which would all have to happen together. Keep in mind that the risk of eventual financial concerns of the city multiplies its unlikelihood with each event. So for example, the park is operating, Space Base is going on, and then for now, it appears it will be profitable, the city becomes unprofitable. That would have to happen. Then the owner of CalSpace Base would have to not figure out how to overcome through strategic adjustments in operations or repositioning of capital. That would have to also. Then if both of those things occur and they try, can't viable operate, then they could find a buyer and then that would not have to happen. And even if all those things occurred, then there potentially would be a buy or not for Space Base but might repurpose it for another educational. So all these things would have to happen in combination, whether one's 20%, 50%, multiplies all those things together. Before it even gets to the city, your odds are so slim. And then the comment was made, well, if the city does re-inherit the property, they come with the liens. But those liens are not standing alone. Those liens are only in place based on improvements to the property. A lender on a project like this will not loan more than 60% loan-to-value, which means there's a built-in 40% equity cushion. So when, if the property comes back, the city doesn't have 60, just have the loans. They've got a property that's worth the loan plus another 50% more than that, or 40% of the equity. There might be some diminishment of the functional obsolescence, you know, a few things around the edges, but there's incredible cushion right there, even if all the other things happened, for then the city to be at financial risk because they have 40% equity in the property. So I want to make this clear. I didn't hear that at the end of last meeting. So that's all. Thank you very much.
My name is Jada Biddle Davis. I am 37 years old and I've been a resident here in Lompoc. I am here as a mother. My husband and I have a three-and-a-half-year-old and we go down to San Diego to go to the zoo. And during that time, we stay in a hotel, we go to the local restaurants. We've also, you know, traveled up the coast and stayed again at local hotels and visited restaurants and filled up at local gas stations. So what I'm trying to impart on you is that as parents, we're constantly looking for ways to entertain our child on a weekend. And I really feel like a lot of other mothers and fathers, parents in general, are looking for that same opportunity to educate our children and really looking forward to, moving forward with this project and maybe having the opportunity to take our daughter to a Space Force Base. One thing that was brought up is that these are a select few people that are interested in this project. I can tell you that if you looked in my phone tonight, I have several friends that couldn't be here because my husband and I had to get a babysitter, you know, to watch our child so that we could be here. This is a long meeting. It's in December, when people would rather stay home with their kids and watch Christmas movies. I mean, kids are out of school right now. So, you know, just because these are the people that could show up today, please do not take this as an indication that we're the only ones that are passionate about this. I'm really excited that come November, this is going to be on the ballot so you can see the true joy that the city of Lompoc is going to have in voting on this. Because I know that there's a lot of interest in this coming to our community. I also promised my father that I would finish up his very inspiring talk and that, you know, kind of just piggybacking off of what I was talking about, that kids need tangible opportunities in our community. And we have the opportunity to inspire kids to reach upward to the stars toward the field stems of science, computer tech, mechanical tech, electronics, high-level math, astronomy and astrophysics, plus all the other supporting fields like hospitality, tour organization, marketing, planning, the list goes on and on. I beg you to please have the courage to look at Space Base as an opportunity to have a much richer life than they would probably have without it. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity that I had to speak here and looking forward to this extension because we understand that you guys are not going to start breaking ground tomorrow, that this, we're just voting, or you guys are just voting on an extension. So thank you so much.
Stacy.
Jeremy.
Dirk.
Janelle.
Gilda.
Victor.
Dean.
Jeff.
Kristi.
Monty.
Mike.
Roberta. We all know each other here. We don't have to pretend. We don't have to lecture at each other. You've been in the hot seat a lot. It's clear. It's tough. Nobody hates you for it. But nonetheless, let's just be professional to this company. Let's give them their opportunity. Let's not be disingenuous and pretend like COVID didn't happen and we stood on these little dots, that we weren't allowed to partake in our city council meetings. And step back, take a deep breath. Let's just push this out like we should so we don't have to do this every three months. Because that's what is tiring. And that's what takes away from our fire, our police, our city lawyer, and that's what runs up those costs that this gentleman's paying for. Maybe we could be further ahead. Maybe we wouldn't be here today if he didn't have to, mother may I, four, five, six times. So let's just be fair. Step back, just move it out and let the process take hold.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, the council is being asked to make one decision about the Pail-Blue Dot Memorandum of Understanding. Excuse me. That is whether to extend the exclusive negotiating period beyond December 31st of this year. The city attorney and Pail-Blue Dot have continued to negotiate a disposition and development agreement. Ongoing costs to the city continue to be paid by Pail-Blue Dot throughout this negotiation process. The city appears to have no alternative opportunities waiting in the wings for the development of Ken Adam Park. At this stage, Pail-Blue Dot Ventures' project plan is strictly conceptual. Sequel considerations will be discussed when and if the project progresses to that stage of development. I urge the council to approve a ninth amendment to the MOU and to continue working with Pail- Blue Dot Ventures to bring Lompoc's Space Base to Ken Adam Park.
All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one else calling, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. To all of you that think we're being negative, there are, in fact, several on council that have been through this and three of us on the Economic Development Committee during the same time, that dealt with two other versions of this proposal that needed an extremely critical eye and did not prove out. So we come to this with a very, very critical eye because we take this very, very seriously, that these are 82 acres of your property and you elected us to do that evaluation. So I know it may seem like we're coming from a negative spot, but what we're trying to be is critical and make sure that we move forward a project that is viable. I want to thank the applicant for continuing through all of the pandemic to keep this moving forward because anybody else probably would've walked away, given the number of extensions with that. So it isn't that we don't want to see a Space Museum or an education program or something that takes advantage of something that is frankly outside of our city and beyond our control. It's a military base and it's commercial launch. So we're just lucky to live here where this is happening. And so to take advantage of that is, you're absolutely right, an opportunity. And I'm hoping third time's a charm. But because it's so critical, because so many of the prior proposals had such huge holes in them, it's made those of us here on council, or working towards supporting and expanding the economic viability of this community, be extremely critical as part of our role that you elected us to be, your oversight of the money we spend and your property. So I just ask for your patience in this and it may feel frustrating, but as the applicant showed us, he had two years of COVID. And we kept giving him six months' extensions with no discussion because we all kept hoping that we were going to come out of this. So I think it's really important, as we move towards a November election, that our community does have as much information as possible so that each one of you can vote and tell us that you want it. It's important that we have the discussions at this council meeting because this is the only thing deemed public. This is the only arena where you are heard and respected because this is the mandated public meeting and it's on the agenda. We're happy to sit in the public and have conversations and meet with you and hear your opinions, but this is the only place that is truly the mandated public meeting, so the discussion has to happen here. So I thank you all for showing up and making the time and getting the babysitters and taking the time out of your night. I wish all our council meetings were this packed on every item. And especially during Christmas. We've seen lots of other decisions happen with two people in the audience and we don't like to make those decisions without having your feedback. So it's really important to us to hear your public comment. And yes, as part of being an elected official, we're used to being criticized for decisions we make or the things we're expressing or the feedback we're providing, often for those that aren't able to be here that have called us or have emailed us or we've bumped into at the grocery store or the gas station. And they aren't always as agreeable with those in the room. And so that's our job. So pivoting back to the item, I just want to say that I think that pushing it to July gives us that opportunity and at, to Councilmember Cordova and anybody else who wants to speak, I would look to Councilmember Vega to make a motion and I would provide him.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Before you have any further discussion, I just wanted to confirm that traditionally the resolutions that we bring forward for an election happen in June, not July.
Oh, thank you for that clarity.
It usually happens the very first meeting of June.
Okay. So extending it to the end of May?
Yeah. Our first meeting in June is June 4th.
Okay. Okay.
This is so that we can align ourselves with the county.
I'm so glad you took the time to look that up because I was assuming it was August sometime and you're right. It has to go to them sooner because it's a ballot measure, not an elected individual.
Yeah. True. But all of our resolutions for an election, because we do have the county, we are aligned with the county.
Okay.
We have to go earlier than their deadline for their elections.
Got it.
So June is the deadline that we have.
Right. So we'd have to do something in May.
I just know that June is the deadline that we have for elections.
I'm just saying, for council clarity, looking at this.
If we wanted to keep that same reasoning, then yeah, second meeting in May.
May. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. I really appreciate you looking that up between now and, then and now. Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say that, I apologize if my passion for serving you comes off as if I know better than you. Believe me, I don't. As someone pointed out last meeting, I'm just a retard after all. It saddens me because I have never stood against this project, but yet I have been told that I'm against this project and that has never been the case. Many of you voted for me because of my experience and now I'm being asked to step down because of my experience. Being fair would be to give Mr. Frank the best opportunity to get this DDA so that he can move forward in the project, and he knows that. Extending it all the way to November doesn't really favor him. But I'm for a compromise and I, and at the end of the day, it's not my choice. I am one voice on this council.
Councilmember Vega.
My turn. Okay, Jeff.
Are you sure you want it?
Yeah. I'm going to take it this time. Jeff, you said the second, second week of May would be a better date now that Tracy, I mean Stacy has clarified.
Second meeting in May.
Second meeting in May.
I think that's May 21st.
It is, May 21st, yes. 2024.
So Jeff, I need your help here. The second meeting in May would be my motion and then you should have everything you need. And how does this work once we have that as a benchmark and how we move forward? You kind of heard what I was, where my direction.
I did. We will do everything that we can to get the DDA to council to vote up or down by the second meeting in May. And then if it's approved, the city council will vote in June for the final decision, the official final decision to put the park item on the ballot for November. And the public will have all the DDA at that time so that they know all that information when they're voting in November.
And that makes sense because we don't want to be obligated to an election if we don't have everything right in space. So my motion would be for us to extend to the second meeting in May, which whatever that date is, unless we need a specific date.
May 21st.
May 21st. And then we move on from there and make a decision to whether the election, whether they have everything in order for us to move forward with the election. I think that probably would be the best direction. Understood.
Councilmember Ball.
I would happily second that motion.
All right. I'll let you have that. Got all the clarity? Anything else, Councilmember Vega?
I'll wait, but yeah, go ahead.
You're good? Okay. Any other questions or clarity? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Item 13, adoption of Resolution Number 6628, parentheses 23, approving lease with option to purchase financing for replacement fleet vehicles and the budgeted street lighting replacement project and approving additional appropriations. And Kristi, you look a lot like Bob Cross.
Thank you. I, I hope I look like Bob Cross.
You do. Thank you, Bob, for stepping up to give us this presentation.
Tough act to follow. This item originally appeared on the...
Hold on just a second. Give us a few minutes to let the room clear so we can hear you.
They weren't all here for the lease financing.
Okay, I think it's quiet enough. We can hear you now.
Thank you. I'm here to present the item regarding our lease financing RFP. This originally appeared on the November 21st consent agenda. We were subsequently advised it should have been as a separate business item on a, on a regular business with separate action and discussion. So I'm here to bring it back for a short presentation. There is one error of note in the resolution I need to point out on page two of the resolution, the second whereas, part C, the 10-year schedule lists as 1,315,000, it should be 1,385,000.
1,385?
385.
Okay.
So one should be an eight. So that was caught this morning. Excuse me? Yes. That was caught, that was cutting and pasting banks language and I caught. Anyway, it's financing 10 solid waste vehicles, collection vehicles, four other solid waste vehicles. vehicles, four electric vehicles, and a street lighting project. It's about nine point three million dollars. There were two bidders for the RFP who complied with all the terms of the proposal, Bank of America and Holman Capital. We've worked with both of them before. The interest rates for Bank of America were in the four point three to four point six range, and Holman was like five point six to five point nine. So significant, about seven hundred sixty thousand dollars extra over the fifteen years of the lease. So we proposed to go with Bank of America. All of the vehicles were included in the budget for the twenty-three twenty-five. There were a few that needed additional appropriations. We've gotten better estimates from our fleet department, so we need a little bit extra for a couple of the vehicles. But that concludes my report, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for Seth? Thank you for the hard work. We'll go to public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, item number thirteen, you're welcome to come to the podium, or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. For those of you that have stayed with us, I thank you. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. And any questions or entertain a motion? Councilmember Ball.
Mr. Cross, is this a good deal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt resolution sixty-six twenty-eight, parentheses twenty-three.
With the change in the resolution.
It's only a few million dollars.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we save that.
Yeah, and I'll second that with the change in the resolution.
All right, Councilmember Vega seconded that. Let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right, new business. Adoption of the City of Lompoc Local Road Safety Plan, December 2023, adoption of resolution number sixty-six twenty-four, parentheses twenty-three. And we have a tag team.
My name is Joshua Leird. I'm with the engineering division. For the last four months, we've been working on a local road safety plan, and we contracted with our consultant, GHD. This is Shannon Oto, and she'll be telling us a little bit about the...
Great, thank you for that clarity, Joshua. I was like, is Joshua going to do this? All right.
So we've got a little presentation for you today. We are here as a representative of the city. We have wrapped up the Lompoc Local Road Safety Plan, and we are here for your support to adopt the plan today. And then the next step from here, once it's adopted by the city, is to send it to Caltrans for adoption, which will in turn make the city eligible for grant funding opportunities through the state. So thank you so much for your attention tonight. I know it's been a long evening. We're going to give you a little bit of a background on how we developed the plan and then some of the countermeasures that we've developed as an example for safety projects for the city of Lompoc. So what is a local road safety plan? Caltrans recognizes that a lot of severe and fatal injury collisions happen on local roadways. So this is a chance for the city of Lompoc to sort out what their priorities are for local road safety projects, make these projects eligible for future funding opportunities through the state and federal highway grants, as well as for the city to evaluate and coordinate within the city between Caltrans, Santa Barbara County, the Fire Department, Police Department, to all get on the same plan to adopt a strategy to address safety on the local road safety So how we developed this plan, we started by establishing a leadership team. The difference between a local road safety plan and other plans is that we do crunch data, we do look at all the different types of collisions and how severe they are, where they're happening. But we also establish a stakeholder working group to get feedback from the community and stakeholders within the Police Department, the Fire Department, on where collisions are happening that might not flush out from the data, where near misses are happening, where there's a perceived safety risk, that kind of thing. So we establish a leadership team, we analyze the safety data, we then determine what the emphasis areas are going to be for the plan, we identify strategies to address those areas, and then we prioritize projects. From there, once the plan is adopted, this is a living document, so it should be updated and evaluated. We looked at ten years of data. Plans typically look at five years of data, so it should be updated with 2023 to 2027 data. So for establishing our stakeholder working group, we had the city of Lompoc, Santa Barbara County, SB CAG, Police Department, Fire Department, Caltrans, the school district, LVCHO, and the consultant. All in the room, we met three times to discuss the plan. The first thing we did was establish a mission and vision and goals for the plan. So the mission that our team came up with was to provide a safe and sustainable roadway system for all modes of travel in the city of Lompoc. Our vision for this plan is that working together to improve roadway safety for all mode choices while striving to achieve zero fatal and severe injury collisions in the Lompoc community. We set out a number of goals for this plan. Hopefully I had a chance to kind of skim through some of that, so I won't read them all for you. Throughout the project, we put out the project for public outreach. We wanted to find out where the community is concerned about safety, as well as what the data is showing. We attended the Old Town Market and did some outreach. I know Mayor, we saw you there. And then we also put up a project website. The city did a great job getting this out in social media blasts, and we had huge participation. So two hundred and seventy comments were collected on safety areas and concerns within the city. We got a hundred and six responses to our survey online as well. So then we got down to the data crunching. We have a system for analyzing all of the data from within the past ten years, looking at the severity of the collisions and where they're happening on the local road system. Then we identified the top segments and the top intersections and worked with our stakeholder working group to identify which of those areas should be addressed within this plan and which of them should be prioritized, based on future projects that might be coming up that have already been funded, based on coordination with the Police Department on what they're seeing out there, and then also input from the public outreach efforts. Then we started to look at some countermeasures to address the safety issues along the corridors. So when we look at countermeasures, what we're looking at is a full safe systems approach. And that is founded in the precipice that zero deaths, that even one death on our transportation system network is unacceptable, and that's vision zero. So the safe systems approach runs on the principle that humans make mistakes, we're all humans, but that those mistakes don't need to lead to a death or a severe injury collision. So we can look at that from the five E's of traffic safety. So there's engineering that goes into our roadway systems, there is emerging technologies, there is enforcement, education, and emergency response, and all of those things feed into a network that's safe. So with our stakeholders, we decided to focus on the following challenge areas for Lompoc specifically. What you're seeing is a full list of areas from the California Strategic Highway Safety Plan, and then Lompoc selected a few of those from there. So we selected aggressive driving and speed management, bicyclists, emergency response, emerging technologies, intersections, and pedestrians. So from there, we have a whole host of countermeasures that we are applying, that we suggest be applied on certain road segments that really, I think, balance all of the roadway users. So this addresses vehicle safety, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, motorcycle safety, from looking at things like improving the lighting where collisions were happening in the dark mostly, especially particularly along H Street. I remember that being a concern. Evaluating the street configuration, deciding whether it's ripe for a road diet or if edge lines need to be striped, things like that. Looking at evaluating and upgrading signals and hardware. So we have the retro reflective backplates, as you see in the bottom left-hand corner there, and installing emergency vehicle preemption systems, so where the fire trucks and ambulances can actually activate the signal to turn green before they get there. And then also looking at curb bulb bouts. What we heard over and over from the beginning of this plan was a concern about roadway crossings, a lack of roadway crossings or safe roadway crossings. And then as far as segment or systemic countermeasures, installing dynamic variable speed feedback signs, evaluating road diets, improving site distances at intersections and crossings, upgrading the crossings to high-visibility bulb bouts, installing or upgrading striping, evaluating corridor lighting, and then installing raised medians. So beyond all of those kind of engineering strategies, we have also suggested some systemic countermeasures that are non-engineering, such as education opportunities, enforcement opportunities, emergency response, and emerging technologies. So when you look at the list, those all sound like great things for the city to apply. These were selected by, there were certain things that we heard back from the stakeholders that they didn't want to see on the plans or that they liked seeing, so we worked with them on that. And then now we have a list of projects that are potential projects that could be put forth for grant opportunities. So the Highway Safety Improvement Program has funding that happens every year. We're not, we're never sure exactly what those criteria are going to be. The state has come out with the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, which the city has received a grant to do an action plan for, so that will extend this LRSP and kind of flush out some projects that can be eligible for those fundings. And then it's also just kind of fostered a collaboration and coordination with Caltrans, SB County, SB CAG, and Fire Department and Police Department. So that's pretty much it. Is there any questions for us?
So I do have one for you. You heard potentially, if you were listening in remote in the back offices, we had someone come forward and speak about issues for some of our residents who are in wheelchairs and walking, and there are intersection issues along H Street. And as he mentioned, H Street is controlled by Caltrans. This plan helps identify, I think, some of those things that he was talking about, and then helps solidify that message to Caltrans so that they can either focus their funds on doing that, or we can force the conversation and get the assistance that we need from them in order to take care of the roads that we don't control. Is that an appropriate assumption of how this plan might help us in a very real way?
Yes, so Caltrans through this process has let us know that they've started planning documents, initiation documents to work on H Street. They, I think the plan is not solid in how they're going to approach it. They were talking about, you know, starting at the south and moving to the north. What we actually found by looking at the data was that a lot of the intersections on the north side are where most of the collisions are happening, and particularly on H Street more often than Ocean. So early in the process, we recognized that although H and Ocean are Caltrans facilities, they are definitely functioning as local arterial streets, and decided to pull those into the plan and really prioritize them because you could see from that map that they're really hotspots on where collisions are happening. So hopefully this document can help guide Caltrans in the development of their plans, and maybe they'll focus on the areas that the city is seeing collisions more often as well.
Okay. I just, I think, given some of the comments made earlier, seeing this as a tool to help us move towards working with our partners to solve that is really important because as we learn in our community, there are a lot of things we don't have control over, and a lot of times, being heard is half the battle. And so the fact that we have worked really hard to create a document that can now be used as a tool and have partners to address the issues is really important. Having sat on SB CAG for the past couple of years, having a list of projects and being able to go to them and say, we need a partnership, let's go ask for the money, and be heard changes the conversation than just us going forward as a single community trying to get attention. So this is exciting to me because H Street has been such a problem for so long, not just to vehicles, but to pedestrians and cyclists and those that are handicap mobility issues, so I appreciate that. Any other questions for our consultant or comments before we go to public comment? Councilmember Ball.
I just want to say thank you for the comments and putting this together, and thank you to Josh, too. I had the opportunity to walk on one of those little walk-around trips where you're kind of surveying the streets and you're looking at lighting conditions and whether or not they have a sidewalk and what happens when the kids have to cross at eight AM on this street, so all those things. I just appreciate the thoughtfulness and collaboration that's happening, and please keep us informed because we want to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, we'll open the floor to public comment. If you'd like to speak to this item, you have three minutes, or if you'd like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Madam Mayor, Council, that was a great presentation. The one thing I didn't see, and I might get over my skis here, but I think we're going into a cycle on the circulation element of the general plan. And I didn't see any integration of that thought in this. And it's easy to imagine that perhaps in the circulation plan, you might change something to avoid potential hotspots, so I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you.
Mayor and Rep., sure, I've been a citizen here for fifty-five years plus and seen some growth in the community. I have a question. It kind of goes also back to something earlier tonight. Is this taking into account the increased traffic flow that could incur up at the Y area and beyond with the pale dot blue? And what's that going to do regarding transportation from Lompoc to Hancock to the Village and beyond and back, as well as air pollution that could be caused by heavy traffic inclusion? I taught environmental history for a long time, and I haven't been up to date as I would if I was still teaching. But at one time, he commented that Lompoc has a inversion factor lower by four hundred feet than Los Angeles, which means there's a greater potential for air pollution getting caught up in this area. We don't have the great area that LA has. We've got about, what, a five-mile valley across, so these things need to be considered as these decisions are being made and brought out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back to council. Any additional questions or concerns? If not, entertain a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
So I would recommend that we accept the plan, but also potentially to incorporate the review of, sorry, what one of the residents...
To correlate with the circulation.
Yeah, because I think it's worth us looking at it just to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity there.
Yeah, why don't you, as the consultant, let us know if that's part of the plan?
Yes, so actually, there are a couple of items within, for example, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan that are not consistent with the current circulation element, and the city is already aware of those, and that should be resolved by the next circulation element. So there's a lot of plans that were reviewed, and it specifically says in this plan that it should be consistent with the circulation element and that the circulation element is being updated.
Does that help?
Yep, all righty.
Councilmember Ball.
That's a full second for me.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns? Let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right, did we have any written communications this evening?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. This is your opportunity for your final oral communication, not only of the evening, but of 2023. but of 2023. You have two minutes. If you'd like to come to the podium, please do. If you'd like to call in, it's 805-875-8201, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Serge Arias. I am the LPOA Vice President. Sorry I'm late. I was sitting at home, and I heard that our POA got brought up in a meeting by the Fire Association's president. Got several calls at home of my union basically saying that they're upset. It was uncalled for for the POA to be compared to, but it's apples and oranges. But since he wants to compare apples and oranges, here are a few numbers. Fire Department runs anywhere 5,500 calls. The Police Department run anywhere from 55,000 calls and up. Our minimum staffing numbers, way different. Fire runs nine firefighters 365 days a year, while the Police Department runs anywhere from four officers and a supervisor to even three and one supervisor. So we want to compare salaries to work and work product, and shouldn't say work product, but work, the amount of work and amount of calls we go to, it's, there's no comparison. My unit has never come up here and compared ourselves to the Fire Department. When we were in negotiations, we understood the city's position. Our Police Department was 17% behind the other agencies that we compared ourselves to. When, when we came to the table, we asked for more, but we understood the city's position and ultimately came to an agreement because we felt that was, was best for our department and for our city. So with that being said, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll close oral communications for the evening, and we'll bring it back to council. We'll start with you, Mr. Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Mr. Ball?
Just a couple of quick things. Really appreciated ribbon cutting ceremony. It was the day after our last, last council meeting, morning before our special meeting. But out at Ryan Park, celebrating a new amazing playground that I get to take my son to all the time. If you haven't been there yet and you have a child, oh my gosh, please go enjoy. It's super soft. You can fall off of things. You won't hurt yourself. It's really, really, really awesome. I met a, I'm going to say middle-aged, but he would have argued probably middle-aged or older, but he was by himself, and he was in that ring where the exercise equipment is. And he just happened to mention like, this is great. I have no excuse now. And that's all he said. And I just, it just made me, just made me want to say thank you to the city staff and all those that were involved in creating a vision for, let's improve this little area. Of course, there's a lot of work to still be done at Ryan Park, but real citizens, real kids are enjoying it and getting some benefit out of that. So I really appreciate that. The pickleball people, they're ruthless. So if you're going to play pickleball, you want to pick it up, you have to get there early. It's one of the things. So we've got to keep the law enforcement keeping an eye on them so that they're not, you know, just, anyway, they're ruthless. But I love those folks there. And then one last thing. Explorer Lompoc hosted a really, really delicious and wonderful coming together dinner for all the hoteliers and some of the people that are involved in tourism in general. And I really appreciate all the effort, money that they've put towards getting people from outside of our city to actually come to Lompoc, spend their money, pay some taxes for us. Anyway, I appreciated that and really enjoyed the dinner. If you have time, Chef Ophelia over there is just an amazing chef, but that's a separate subject. Thank you to everyone. Hope you all have a wonderful holiday and Merry Christmas to you all. That's it.
Councilmember Codova.
I want to say thank you to all of our first responders, all of our city staff, all of the volunteers and the nonprofit agencies that support and sustain our community. It's the end of the year. I want to wish everyone and our entire community a blessed holiday season. I do pray for our community, and I hope that everyone's home is filled with joy, laughter, peace, good health, and prosperity for 2024, and keeping our, our minds, our prayers, and our hearts open to our at-risk community as well. My heart is also with them, and I want to make sure that they know that we do care about them, and I know that there's a lot of people in this community that support that cause as well. So thank you, guys.
Councilmember Vega.
Thanks for all the people that showed up tonight and voiced their opinion. I'm here from the heart. As you can see, I'm not over thanking people and over thanking everybody that's getting paid. I know this is part of the job. I do appreciate the police. I appreciate the fire. I don't have to over thank them for everything that they're doing because they know that they're needed and they know that they're appreciated. And I hope everybody knows that sometimes you have to be fiscally responsible to get to a certain point. So everything they approve, that we approve that could move Lompoc forward, I hope we, we give people a chance because that's where the revenue stream is going to come in, and then we can do everything intelligently. It's kind of like pale blue dot. We say, hey, we'll give them to July, whatever, is it May? So they can come up and have the full package so we can see if we're going to waste money on a, or put money into an election. So I think that's the way we need to do it, where we're all on the same page. In politics, there's people here that, you know, they, they do things their way, and I, you know, just like me, I'm sitting up here speaking and saying, hey, guess what? But there's people that have never reached over the aisle to speak to me about an agenda item. They don't care what I think. They have the votes, so I'm just somebody here at the end of the dais, okay? So, but I'm here from the heart because I grew up here, and I really feel for this community. And the only reason I'm still here is because I still have been expected to not kill the dream. I think we can be more. So thank you, guys, okay? Merry Christmas, and I appreciate all of you guys, you know? Anyway, take care.
I attended the Santa Barbara County Area of Governments and chaired my last meeting for 2023, and a new chair will take over in 2024. The Northern California Power Agency does not have a meeting this month, but we have a couple of special meetings that I am in attendance of as part of the executive team and vice chair of that organization, and will continue to do so next year. I attended the final meeting of the Local Airgy, Air Agency Formation Organization, otherwise known as LAFCO, and hope to continue on it next year. We had our quarterly meeting of city managers and mayors for Santa Barbara County, and Lompoc hosted it. And I want to thank the city manager and the staff who helped organize and have the mayors from the other communities come here and discuss issues we're experiencing as a region, and also just visit Lompoc. It's been a while since some of them had been here. Like Jeremy, I attended the Ryan Park ribbon cutting, as you saw in the video earlier tonight. And not only is pickleball, you need to get there early, but the Santa Maria Pickleball Club came to help us, and now they're aware. So I don't know, maybe we should have to check IDs as they come in and make sure Lompoc gets priority. And I want to congratulate and thank the Police Department for the promotion and swearing and ceremony held here to the two individuals that were promoted and the four new officers that came on board. Thank you for your dedication to our community and, and to the Fire Department. I know it's been a rough year. We have heard you. We are working to be equitable and move you forward. We will continue to do so. We have budget limitations, and it's hard to tell you no when we know how much you do for our community and the, and the needs that you have. So a few things to remind you of. The city manager mentioned it earlier. We will have closure of City Hall and several of the facilities. That is on our city website that you're welcome to go to. Services such as trash pickup will only be delayed on the Christmas and New Year's holiday, those, those Mondays, and we'll be shifted out. The pool has a two-week maintenance closure during the winter. All of those things are listed. Police and Fire will still be doing it 24/7, so thank you. I know you guys never take a break, so I just want to remind the community that if you see them out and about, thank them. If you have extra cookies, drop them off. They will be appreciative. And the Lompoc Police Department is having a police community academy that begins January 11th for nine weeks. So if you're interested in what it takes to be a part of our department or curious about it, you can reach out to the department and sign up. The deadline to sign up is January 3rd. Their information is on the section of the city website that is the Police Department. Those holiday lights, our GIS department made a map. It is on social media, and it was issued. Go drive around. I've never seen more lights in our community. Also, like, I never saw more people out at a Christmas parade than we had this year. So our community's really loves the holidays, and, and I think we should go, get out, meet our neighbors, drive around, and see or walk the neighborhoods. We have a kids' winter camp going on, so if your kids are driving you nuts and you want a place to let the energy out, contact the Parks and Recs Department to find out what the availability is, and, and there is some discount for multiple children. And then there's a swim instructor training in January. The deadline, I believe, to sign up for that is also the 3rd. So if you're interested, yeah, the deadline to register, that's also on the Parks and Recs site. Point and time count, so the count that happens for us to assess what is our homeless population happens once a year, every couple of years. It will be January 24th this year. The deadline to sign up to participate in that is January 19th, and that information is available on the county of SB dot point and time dot info website, and it's a link. And it's very helpful. I know it's very early in the morning. It starts at 5:30, goes to 9:00 AM, but it's a really important part of understanding and assisting with the funding to address the issue. So the more that participate, the quicker the morning goes. And last but not least, as a member of the American Association of University Women, we hold an event each year called Speech Trek. It is open to all genders of high school students. The contest will be March 7th, 2024, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. The deadline to submit your interest is the 26th of January. The question you will be answering in a five-to-six-minute original speech is how can we ensure a robust public school curriculum that is accessible to all and teaches historically accurate information? It is a great opportunity to learn how to use your voice and discuss an idea and present it. There will be local prizes. First place will be $300. Second place will be $150. Third will be $100. The first-place video is submitted to the statewide competition, and those that place first will receive $1,500.
From the state? And on that note, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be adjourned to the next city council meeting of 6:30 PM on January 16th, 2024.